Order, as a reminder, if you'd like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. Uh, Mark, can we go with roll call?
Councilmember Lorimer?
Here.
Councilmember Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Tassari?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yao?
Here.
Mayor Plott?
Here.
Alright, uh, there was no closed session of public comments, uh, so that will lead us to item number five, which is our invocation, and tonight's invocation will be presented by Paul Choi up Hillcrest Baptist Church.
Alright, let us pray together. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you so much for this evening, Lord. We thank you for your grace and your goodness upon our lives. And Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. And Father, tonight, we thank you for the blessing of life, Lord. We thank you for the gift and the blessing of eternal life that you give us through your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. And Father, we thank you for the wonderful blessing of liberty and freedom and to live in this awesome country and to enjoy the freedoms of this land. And then, Father, I think about the special blessing to live here in this community and to be a part of this city of Eastvale. And Father, I pray tonight that you would bless our community, Lord. I pray, Father, that you'd, uh, bless the, uh, individual families, Lord, throughout our community, that you would, uh, comfort those that are in need, Lord, that you would provide for those that are struggling, uh, even this evening. And then, Father, I pray that you would be with the leadership that we have in this community. I pray, Father, for our leaders tonight. I pray, Father, for our public servants here tonight. And I pray, Father, that you build a hedge of protection around their lives. And then, Father, I pray that you would give them wisdom, that you'd give them guidance, that, Father, you'd, uh, grant them the wisdom that doesn't come from this world, but wisdom that comes from above. And Father, you've promised us in your word that if any of us lack wisdom, we can ask of God, and that you give to us freely, and yet pray not. And so, Father, I pray tonight that you would grant, uh, wisdom to our leaders, especially to our mayor. I pray, Lord, that you give them a discernment, Lord, give them, uh, just the courage to make the right decisions. And then, Father, in everything that's done throughout this meeting, we pray, Lord, in the things that are said and, uh, and the things that are, uh, done, Lord, the proposals that are made, I pray ultimately that you would be magnified and that you would be glorified. Father, we thank you for this evening. We pray now that you bless this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Choi, for those words. Councilmember Tassari, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Alright, please rise and place your hand over your heart.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move to item seven, additions and revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action item, or an action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mark, has there any, been any staff member that's been wanting to pull an item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmembers, colleagues, would you, any items that you want to add or revise? Alright, we'll then move to item number eight. We'll go to eight point one, presentation announcements, and we will have an update from, uh, Eastvale Public Library Branch Manager, Felicia Chen.
Good evening, your mayor and city council members. First, the library would like to announce that we had a fairly successful gingerbread house event back in December. This is by far one of our biggest events throughout the year. We had a total of thirty-eight patrons participate. We hope that the families and the communities are able to partake in this annual event. Second, in January, we will be having a teen craft week with three D doodlers. Starting January twentieth through the twenty-fifth, childrens and teens can come in and make shapes and designs with three D, with a three D doodler. These pens have the ability to make freehand creations of three-dimensional designs, so stop on by, um, for this week to test out some of the designs. Lastly, the Friends of the Library would like to announce that its first inaugural book sale will be held soon. The book sale will be held on Saturday, February twenty-second, from ten to three P. M. We hope you take advantage and stop by and check out the selection. The Friends of the Library would also like to announce that they are still looking for, uh, willing and active members. If you are interested in helping out the community as well as being part of the library atmosphere, this is a great way to be involved. For more information about the Friends of the Library, please feel free to come, uh, come in or call during our hours of operation. Thank you. Were there any questions?
Well, thank you very much, Alicia. We'll now move to item eight point two, our student liaison report, which is given by Michael Ro, Michael Roman.
Good evening. Good evening, council members and fellow citizens of Eastvale. Our Eastvale schools are currently up to some great things, and tonight I would like to highlight Eleanor Roosevelt in particular and all the major happenings here on campus. Last month, I spoke of a toy drive and car giveaway sponsored by Platinum Collision Centers. This event was a success with a great community turnout and a very, very lucky student receiving a brand-new car, a plethora of gifts, and even a visit from Santa Claus. Roosevelt's Eastem Expo is happening tonight from four to seven P. M. This event is featuring Eastem students showcasing some neat science experiments for elementary students. The hope of this innovative event is to get young students involved and excited about maybe becoming future STEM students themselves once they go to high school. Eleanor Roosevelt is also preparing for another pep rally. This pep rally has taken on an innovative theme of space and glow-in-the-dark effects. And what is unique about and special about this pep rally in particular is that it is going to be, for the first time in Roosevelt history, we will be inviting River Heights and Ramirez leadership students over to, uh, experience the pep rally, to maybe get them excited and hopefully inspired to become future leaders and maybe a part of the A S B family one day. Next Tuesday, there will also be a senior information assembly aimed at getting our seniors excited for the upcoming graduation season. Four more months. And Roosevelt is also proud to announce that next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, Roosevelt will be hosting a world-famous motivational speaker named Eric Thomas. This presentation is by invite only, and he will be hosting two sessions for our students. Session one will be geared to students involved with leadership organizations and how to become better leaders, uh, themselves, while the second session will be aimed for students who are academically struggling. As you can see, we are currently very busy, however, these projects are extremely exciting. And as always, uh, thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Are we invited to the motivational speaker?
I can actually work that out if you guys would like to stop by. I had a feeling that might be a question. I can, I'll, I can reach out and we can definitely invite you guys. Yeah, I think it'll be cool.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Any questions? Thank you, Michael, appreciate it. We will now move to item eight point three, W R C O L E D streetlight retrofit rebate check presentation. And Daniel Soltero, would you like to present?
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council and community members. Uh, my name is Daniel Soltero. I'm a W R C O staff analyst here to talk to you about the regional streetlight program and the efforts that the city of Eastville took to retrofit the streetlights. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. So, the regional streetlight program was, was, uh, developed in twenty-fourteen, um, in order to facilitate the acquisition of streetlights for our jurisdictions, um, the retrofit to LED, as well as providing, uh, maintenance of the streetlights across regional contracts. Um, and so, the major objectives of the program are to save energy, save on jurisdiction utility bills, um, enhance public safety, as well as period revenue generating or smart city In the program, we have eleven jurisdictions participating. There are ten cities and one special district, including the city of Eastvale. The big picture of our program is that across the region, we're going to be retrofitting fifty-five thousand streetlights. Uh, to date, we're approximately thirty-seven thousand, a little closer to thirty-eight thousand by now. Um, the new LED lamps adhere to the American Medical Association's recommendations for the, uh, color to not be greater than three thousand Kelvin. That's the color temperature of the LED. Um, it, uh, the LEDs also provide a better color perception as well as, uh, the, uh, you know, you get better color perception as well as more coverage on, on the street, um, much better than the, uh, pre-existing, uh, sodium lamps. The result of the, of using, uh, LEDs on streetlights is across the region, we'll be saving our jurisdictions approximately seventy million dollars over twenty years. So, this is, uh, after, after everything's been paid for. Here are the details specific to the city of Eastvale. So, the city purchased, uh, forty, about four thousand one hundred poles from Edison. Um, the retrofit started in June of last year, um, and it was completed in fall. It only took a couple of months to complete that. However, uh, at this point, we have about five poles that we haven't been able to find in the field. Uh, it could be due to a data discrepancy from Edison, could have been a pole knockdown, or, uh, the pole may have just been moved or removed altogether from, uh, before the sale. Um, so at this point, we're working with Edison to try to complete that and figure out where these poles are. The results, uh, for, for the city, as far as the LED retrofit goes, um, you'll be saving approximately four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars annually. This is just in the utility savings from your bills, um, so pretty substantial savings in energy, um, uh, energy cost, as well as the, the actual energy consumption. You'll be saving seventy-six percent on, on, on kilowatt-hours. Here's a graph representing what the, what the savings should look like. The red is the dollar figure, and the blue line is for your energy consumption. So, this is what the LEDs look like. Although this is a picture of the city of Marietta during one of our sample areas, this is representative of what is occurring across the region. So, on the left-hand side, you have the old sodium lamps. Um, below is a picture of what, uh, the color perception is under those lamps. As you can see, colors are often washed out, and you can't really distinguish between certain colors, if, if any at all. Um, on the right-hand side, you have the LED lights. Um, as you can see, the, you know, the color perception is much, much better under the LED streetlights. Um, also, the coverage is, is better. Um, LED streetlights extend light in a slightly better coverage area than the old, uh, sodium This is another picture representing what the city of Eastville should be experiencing. So, uh, as you can see, the, uh, older sodium lights, uh, you know, while they, they illuminate pretty well directly underneath the pole, the light actually, the light actually dies down pretty quickly as you get further away from the pole. So, with the LED lights on the right-hand side, you can see that we're able to cover much more of the street. What this translates for the city is that overhead, this is actually an aerial picture of the city of Eastvale. Um, so, as you can see, uh, you know, pretty distinct points where all of these streetlights are. Um, one of the goals of the streetlight program was to reduce the overall uplight or light pollution, um, in order to comply with the Palomar Observatory's, um, goals as well. Um, and so, uh, while we do not currently have an after picture, which is the LEDs, uh, aerial of the city of Eastvale, we are going to be doing after pictures once the regional retrofit is complete, and so, we'll be able to provide these at a later time. However, this is representative of what we should see in the city of Eastvale. This specific picture is in Marietta, and as you can see, the LED streetlights in comparison to the old sodium lights, it's pretty, pretty substantial. Um, if, if you were to look pretty close, if you were to zoom in into this picture, you would see distinct points where the old, uh, LED, where the old sodium lamps are, and that would be representative of uplight or light pollution. When you're looking at the LED lights, as you can see in residential areas here, you only see the illuminated street and not necessarily a distinct point where the bulb would necessarily, where the bulb would be found. Um, so, this, this representative of, we are reducing uplight, and, uh, also looking pretty closely, you may notice that streets, the streets are more uniformly lit, uh, with the LED lights. And overall, this translates into a rebate from the utility company and through W R C O. So, the overall rebate for the city of Eastvale is four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars nine hundred and eighteen. Uh, so, it's pretty substantial, and I'd like to, uh, you know, give applause to the council members for your leadership and, and, you know, wanting to do this program for the city. Um, I'd like to also, uh, give a handout to our city manager who participated in this, and, uh, of course, our streetlight champions with the city, Jorge Zavala and Craig Bradshaw. And, uh, if, if it's possible, I actually have a giant check for you guys, and like to be able to take a picture with y'all if, if that's available. Awesome. So, if we could have the members of the council, uh, Brian, if you'd like to join us as well, and also, if they're in here, Craig and Jorge. We also have some commemorative poll tags here, which is an award showing a poll tag with the number of streetlights that the city purchased. And so, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I was wondering where the, uh, actual rebate goes to, what fund?
Good question. It'd be, uh, it'd be the general fund. Um, it's the city's money to use as it pleases, and so, um, we'll be delivering the money here pretty soon.
Thank you for that presentation. Thank you for, uh, for the recap on this. This has been a project that has been in the works, um, that we're, we're very excited for, and there's, uh, we talked about the lighting aspect of the, the street poles, but there's so much more that went into, and it goes into us actually owning our street poles now, so it's an exciting thing for our city. So, thank you very much for the presentation, and thanks for coming and sharing this good news with us.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Ken, for coming out for the presentation. I think one other thing I want to, want to bring up is that definitely part of the reason why we wanted to do this as a city about two years back, when it kind of was starting to be introduced, was, yes, there was enormous cost savings, but also, there's been some public safety initiatives, one being investing in technology, other than actually having more officers or more hours, where we increased ten additional hours. Other components, too, is lighting. Like, lighting creates a better public safety enhancement, right? Better quality enhancement in neighborhoods. Not on top of that, but there's just a, on top of that, there's just the better aesthetic when you're driving through the city. The, the lights are far more, uh, pleasing to see them than the, the, uh, orange sodium lights, so thank you, and thank you for presenting that. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you for the comments.
You're welcome. Councilmember Lorimer?
I really want to know what happened to the five streetlights, so when you figure that out, please let us know.
Well, dear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll now move to item number nine, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mark, has there been any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have six comment cards. The first one is Amelia Crawford.
Good evening. I have just three minutes, so I'm going to talk fast. I am here because there's a lot of new construction in Eastvale and other areas, and it's imperative to have inspectors with integrity to see that the contractors and the subcontractors install proper up-to-code materials, do proper completions and installations, and install proper materials. When I went to change the filter after living in the house for a year, I discovered there was no filter. It had never been put in. So, then last, uh, summer, the microwave started acting up, and I figured, oh, it's fourteen years old, so I'll buy another one. So, my brother, who's an electrician, installs it, and it doesn't work. So, then he, uh, uses another socket in the kitchen, and both microwaves worked. So, it turns out that the socket had burned up. Here it is. I bought it so you could see it, how it's been, it melted. And so, um, the circuit breaker didn't even go off. It didn't trip. So, um, the wire that was used, it should have been twelve gauge, not fourteen. Even my neighbor has a house like mine. He's not an electrician, but he knew the wires were faulty, and he has electrical problems in his house. There should be a twenty amps and not fifty amps circuit. And here it is. I want to pass it around so you can see how it's turned up. Alright, and then now my patio light outside doesn't work. I think it's the wiring, we think. At Christmas, I decided not to use the furnace in the house, but just use the, a little space heater, and I hear this loud noise in the kitchen. I think it's, oh, it must be that G F I button, because we're always having to push it in so the electricity works. So, I asked my son-in-law, who's a fireman, to come and, and check in case there was a fire behind the wall. Well, so, um, the circuit breaker didn't go off either. So, here it is, and you can see it's, it's burnt. Made a real loud noise when it went off. And so, um, electrical problems. Alright, and then, the cabinet door in my bathroom wouldn't close. So, um, we investigated, and it turns out the sink was, uh, sinking, and when, and looking at it, there were no nuts and bolts in it. So, now I have a piece of wood holding this, the sink up. So, in the future, it would be nice if the realtors, uh, could tell their clients to check the water pressure, because our neighborhood has high water pressure. The house next door had been flooded. I found out I had high pressure because the toilets kept filling and refilling. Luckily, the, um, the faucet, the faucets didn't leak. So, my son-in-law and, um, another, uh, Manuel, who they're Boy Scout, Boy Scout leaders, they replaced the valve in fifteen minutes and it cost, like, less than two hundred and fifty dollars. I got estimates for a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour and nine hundred dollars to replace the, uh, pressure valve. And then, last year, in November, I got, I had to get a new water heater. I had an estimate of like three thousand dollars from some unscrupulous person, and then I eventually got it for less than that. So, that's my Chandler Ranch saga.
Thank you, Amelia.
So, I want you to see these burnt-out pieces.
Councilmember Tassari? Uh, who was your builder?
Uh, Chandler Ranch, they're, uh, bankrupt.
Was it, was it K. B. Holmes or Chandler Ranch? Oh, that was, um...
Yeah, they're bankrupt. I called them, believe me.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Councilmember Lorimer, I apologize.
Yeah, well, I'm so sorry to hear, uh, I just want to say that it's terrible to hear about that, and, um, I, I do want to reassure you that, uh, if, if what I heard with the, the dates are, um, correct, and I think I heard thirteen, fourteen years, that was well before the city became a city. That was, um, county, and so, we have our own inspectors that go out, and, um, we have good people on staff, so, um, but please check these other things before, uh, that this does not look good. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to hear that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lorimer.
Next speaker is Jamie Martinez. Um, and there's time donated by Ronald Fernandez, so there'll be six minutes total.
Jaime, come on up.
Oh, Jaime.
Yeah, that's alright.
Sorry.
Good evening, members of the, uh, Steam City Council, Mayor Plott, and City Manager Jones. I stand before you today as a representative of, of the Eastvale Number Nine Neighborhood Watch Program. I attended a council meeting and spoke during the same, same public comment several months ago regarding an issue which many of the residents in my neighborhood have been dealing with for several years now. This is the parking issue or the overflow parking from the Seraphina condos. I won't beat a dead horse, because as most of you already know, if not all of you, the problems we're experiencing, but I will provide you with a recap specifically on the Oak, on the Caxton, Oakdale, Emmerdale, Moon River, and Black Horse Streets. Overparked vehicles, suspicious vehicles, suspicious persons, loud music, excessive trash left on our streets, our trash cans not being picked up because they're being blocked by vehicles, vehicle break-ins, vandalisms, and burglaries, both vehicle and residential. All of the aforementioned issues are a direct result of the excess in vehicles parked in our neighborhood, which do not even belong to our own residents. A petition for parking by permit only was already signed by a majority of the affected neighbors. A copy of that petition was given to this council some time back. It's my understanding that back in August of twenty nineteen, City Manager Jones met with Seraphina management and had a meeting in which the parking situation and criminal activity at the condos and in the near, and in the nearby neighborhoods was evaluated. As a result of that meeting, the Board of Seraphina Community implemented a parking improvement plan. This plan included hiring a security company to patrol the condos and nearby streets, garage inspections that would be conducted to ensure condo residents were using their two-car garages to park their car, their cars, and not their stor, and not a storage area. Five additional parking permits were to be given out per household in the condos, and repaving and restriping inside the condos to allow for more parking. Here are the results of what that plan was. Here are the results today. Most of us have never even seen the security company, much as having patrolled our neighborhood. I was told by a condo resident several weeks ago that non-residents were paying the security guards twenty dollars to park inside of the condos, which means that the permitted residents have to park their vehicles outside because the security guards are taking money, and this resident physically witnesses. And none of the neighbors have heard any word on the results of the garage inspections, and we have certainly seen zero noticeable difference in our neighborhood. Finally, on last Thursday, my partner spoke to Tiffany Petty, who is a Seraphina property manager. He questioned her about, about the repaving and restriping of the parking inside the condos, which was part of the parking improvement plan. She told him the condos were repaved, but they were not restriped any different from the original design because they needed approval, and they didn't have approval for it. He questioned her as to giving out five additional parking permits per household and whether or not the condos could even accommodate those five parking permits. Her response, and I quote, "I can't answer that." I also want to share with you a snippet from an email from City Manager Jones to Tiffany Petty, property manager, dated October sixteenth, twenty nineteen. I, Brian Jones, have shared with the Neighborhood Watch Program, if Seraphina is not able to address the problem they are creating, that the city will step in. However, I want to be able to first give Seraphina an opportunity to address the parking issues created from their parking policies and the criminal activity element. It is evident, based off of your email, City Manager Jones, that you acknowledge Seraphina is creating the problems, and the city leaders were kind enough to give Seraphina more than ample opportunity to clean up their act. We are near the end of January twenty twenty, and nothing in our neighborhood has changed. What has changed is that we know security guards are getting paid off. We know that the original plan of restriping didn't happen. We know that all those problems I mentioned are still there. They have created a facade with which they tried to fool both the city leaders and the residents of our community. Seraphina needs to spare us a song and dance and take responsibility for what they have created. Seraphina management knows the plan they have implemented failed in all regards, which means that after almost a decade of dealing with this issue, now it's time for the city to step in. We are pleading with our city leaders to implement parking by permit only, or at very minimum, no overnight parking. This would solve the majority of the problems we're facing. To the council members, Mayor Plott, and City Manager Jones, this issue is more than trash and overparked vehicles. This is about the safety of the residents of our community, and that I take very seriously, and I know you do as well. That's why we as a community and a neighborhood are asking you to step in, to step in and take appropriate action. Thank you for your time and consideration, Ms. Matt.
Thank you, Jaime. Appreciate your comments. It, I won't make a comment, I don't want to refrain from having dialogue, but we will, I know this will be brought up in council communications toward the end of the meeting as well.
Next speaker is Adrian Sandoval.
One, one second, before that.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Just want to say that there has been follow-up, I, I know this, on, on the part of the city with Seraphina. We're waiting on their response at this point, so it, this issue has not fallen off the radar. We're still in communication, so, but thank you for coming forward and sharing, sharing tonight.
Good evening. My name's Adrian Sandoval. I live on Caxton Street also. Um, I want to address the parking on our street. Every Monday, we have a challenge putting our trash cans out because of the cars that park there overnight from Seraphina Town Homes. Um, I recently got a notice here, um, that they would not pick up my trash if this continued, if the cars blocked, you know. On several occasions, I've had the people that park there, whoever it was, take my trash cans off the street and put them on the sidewalk, so they were left behind. This has happened before this notice and after this notice, and also the trash that's been left behind, beer bottles, McDonald's, I mean, quite a bit of trash. And I've been there since, since the build, ten years, little over ten years, and it's always been a problem, so, um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Next, next speaker is Sandy Rowan.
Hi, everybody. This, I'm Sandy Rowan. I also live on Caxton. I'm an original owner, and this problem has been continuous. When the condos weren't completed, we didn't have that problem. Once they were done, the parking just got worse and worse. I'm actually down probably about four or five houses from, um, Jaime, and I still get the, the parking. I get the trash. We get the loud music at night. There was one particular day, my neighbor was borrowing my pool for her son's birthday party. Three o'clock in the afternoon, we had some people, um, two cars in front of my house that actually looked like gang members. They were sitting there smoking pot, doing, um, drinking, the whole thing in the middle of the day, and I know that, I recognized the one from the condo. I had seen it many times, and I had to tell my friend, keep your children inside, because they, they were dangerous looking. They were scary, because somebody's straight out of Compton. It was, and it, there has been many, many times... It was, and there has been many, many times, and they're very confrontational with us. If I say anything, they just kind of look at you like, well, I'm just going to do what I want. And I'm tired of the trash is constant in our neighborhood and the disrespect. And the trash cans too, they will move them. And that's happened to us a couple of times, so our trash wasn't picked up. It's a real problem for all of us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sandy.
Next speaker is Julie Montalongo.
Hi, good evening. I'm also here to speak on the overflow parking issue. I don't live on Caxton, so I don't have, I live on Black Horse Street, so I don't have cars parking in front of our home. But we still have other issues that the overflow parking is causing. When we go out and walk our dogs in the evening, there's trash in the street. And I'm not talking about people dropping a receipt, which is still not okay. I'm talking about bags of fast food with their cups in the middle of the street. And it's not just one time, it's constantly an issue. We also have people parking on the corner of Bannington and Caxton, which creates a hazard because when you're turning on that street to get out on Oakdale, you can't see the cars that are coming into the neighborhood, which a lot of times we have to kind of drive very, very slowly. But other people don't drive slow, so this is just accidents. Another one of my neighbors, she has a lot of, she had, her car was parked in the driveway and a car hit her that was parked on the street from somebody pushing the parked car into her driveway. There's thieves that know there's an abundance of parked cars overnight in our area. So we have cameras and we are constantly seeing people walking around at one, two in the morning, checking for cars that are unlocked. We had a car drive by. They weren't walking around the neighborhood, but they were driving around the neighborhood. They would stop at the parked cars and check the doors from inside their vehicle. My neighbors can't bring in their trash cans. I know some of them leave them out the whole week because if they bring them in, someone's going to park there and then they can't take it out on trash day. And this is not a pleasant feeling. I mean, I don't think any of you guys would like to have your neighbors needing to keep their trash cans out the whole week, four months. When they do have their trash cans out, people move them and they can't get their trash picked up. I don't know about you guys, but our trash gets pretty full. So I can't, I don't know what I'd do if I didn't have my trash picked up for a week. Their driveways are blocked. And like Jaime mentioned, the Seraphina has the new parking rules and permit changes, but we haven't seen any improvements. There's still an abundance of cars parked there. The trash continues to be an issue, and we still have thieves walking our whole neighborhood at night. So we'd really appreciate it. I'm all for the parking restrictions, even though I don't have cars parking in front of my street. But I know that if we did that, it would alleviate some of the issues we have throughout our whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Next speaker is Laura Rotten.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. My name's Laura Rotten, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm a past council member and current resident of your neighbor to the east in Harupa Valley. And I'm here tonight with a long overdue commemorative book to leave with you about a very special day that helped the four newest cities in California. And the title is called Governor Brown Came to Town. So some of you remember on May twelfth, 2017, that the governor did come and sign SB 130 and restored the funding to the four newest cities in the state of California. So with my sister's help, and I mean basically she did it and I just directed, we put together a photo book for you all. There's, each of the cities got one and a couple other, our legislators got one as well. So I want to leave this with you. And if you'd indulge me, I have a very short narrative at the front that kind of encapsulates what the book is about. Governor Brown came to town. In June 2011, with new city funding taken in the night, California's four youngest cities chose the only option to fight. Without those promised revenues, future scenarios were not pretty. The previously legislated funds were essential to the fledgling young cities. All worked diligently together, councils, residents, and staff, with state legislators and lobbying team guiding our path. The journey was arduous, lasting six long years, but finally the young cities could unite in a cheer. Governor Brown came to town, a sight never thought to be seen, and all stood amazed on May twelfth, 2017. There were tears and laughter amid joy and shouts because until that day, the four cities' futures were in doubt. At Harupa Valley City Hall, the governor finally signed his name to SB 130, the bill that keeps us all in the game. This battle is over, our futures are bright. Hard work and perseverance made everything right. So I leave you with this copy. Who do I give that to, Brian? And thank you for being a part of that battle with us.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate the gift and it's very thoughtful of you. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Elsa Roman, and she has time donated from Carlos Mejia, so she'll get six minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name's Elsa Roman, and my home is actually the corner house where the street behind my backyard is the street that's between me and the Seraphina apartments. And so the things that I've had to deal with throughout the past ten years that I have in this house is I've caught people throwing stuff over into my yard that were parked on that street back there. Once I yelled at them and told them, please don't do that, my kids play in that backyard. I've found knives in my backyard. I've found clothes in my backyard. I found constant trash all over my yard. I've had people run up to the front window, which is my mom's room, bang on it, scare her to the point where I almost had to send her to the hospital. She was, you know, she's old. And so I had a car stolen off my driveway, probably the first year I was living there. I had another, I was the resident who, in the middle of the night, was woken up by a loud noise, and that was a parked car was hit and put into my driveway, caused major damage to my car. Let's see here. At one point, I did take pictures of the trash that I found around the vehicles that I knew came from Seraphina, and they said that because I couldn't prove that they lived there, that all they could do was bring it to the people that live there's attention, that there was nothing really they can do. When I asked the city what could be done, they said that basically in the end it was my responsibility to clean up the trash, which I don't mind because I love where I live and I have no problem doing it. One time, I was leaving my house at five o'clock in the morning, and there was a vehicle parked on the side, and he was in the middle of the street and he was a lookout for someone who was up and down the street. I don't know if they were looking at cars or houses or whatever. I've found knives on the street, which those I did call PD in to come and pick up. I have found, let's see, I'm sorry, it's a long list. I've found a lot of liquor containers, some of them filled with urine. Let's see. I know that they've broken into my car a couple of times, just taken basic stuff, glasses, chains that I left, you know, whatever. And it is maybe nothing, but it's my privacy. It's my personal space. And it's just, it's, you know, it's not right. I'm trying to think of anything else. I'm so sorry. I think that's pretty much it. I know it's a lot, but I'm sure there's more. I just couldn't come up with it right now. I'm sorry. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for those comments. And again, I know we'll be addressing this more detail in City Council Communications, which is actually the end of the agenda. So thank you.
We have one final comment from Brian Jones.
So as a public comment, last council meeting, we heard some very special news from one of our council members, Mayor Protem Jocelyn Yao. And we have some information to share about what color. And so let me help this out right here. And we are very much a family around here, and our family is growing with Jocelyn. So we're very excited about this announcement.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, it is a boy, and the baby is due in late May, just in case anyone is curious. And I know the baby will, he's very lucky to have all of you here and to be growing up in this city, in this lovely city of ours. Thank you.
Congratulations, Jocelyn. And we're here to also be a support for you as well, so thank you. All right. How do I go after that? I can't even, how do I, I mean, it does a total curve ball. All right.
Got a surprise to keep you on your toes.
Yeah, apparently. We'll now move to item ten, consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action, separate action on a specific item. Mark, is there anybody, any staff member or any members of the public that have requested to pull a particular item?
Yes, mayor, we have a request to speak on item ten point five.
Ten point five. All right, and council members, are there any particular item? Okay, then can we have a motion at least for the balance of, some of ten point four, ten point six, seven, and eight?
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yao?
Yes.
Mayor Plot?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, and then we'll move to item ten point five, crime statistics in November 2019.
The speaker for this item is Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening and congratulations, Jocelyn. I wanted to pull this item, I thought about it last month, but I waited a month. I've been looking at the crime statistics in the city for a while, and I'm very pleased with most of what I'm seeing. The overall call volume appears to be decreasing, which is excellent news. Overall crimes look like they're flat generally. One area that sticks out, though, is aggravated assaults. And I don't know if it's coming from the Seraphina neighborhood problems that we're seeing, or my suspicion was perhaps we're just seeing things related to, in the family, impeachment that came up at the holidays, I don't know. But I'm just a little bit perplexed by that particular stat. And I don't know if there's anything that we might know going on underneath that. But I wanted to bring it to your attention because I know you're all very sensitive to safety in the community. And just thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
Lieutenant Martin, you want to maybe address that?
A lot of these type of incidents are, it comes and goes. So one month you'll see an increase, and there's usually no particular reason, especially for aggravated assaults. They could be domestic related, they could be fights after school, they could be a variety of different reasons. But yeah, we saw the number increase, and there's nothing that really stands out other than the number went up. So it comes and goes. You'll, hopefully it won't drop next, next month and go from there. So but there's nothing in particular that sticks in my mind.
Councilmember Tesari?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, just in regards to that, we should count ourselves very fortunate because I think we are bucking the trend statewide. Most Part One and Two crimes are on the rise. So thanks to our superior level of law enforcement in the city and the citizens. I mean, it really is just, it's related to the good work of our Neighborhood Watch programs and just citizens that are paying attention and coming to us tonight like you have in the past, bringing up problems that we can address and figure out some solutions to. So thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
All right, seeing that there's no further comments or discussion, I have to turn to the council for a motion. Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yao?
Yes.
Mayor Plot?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
We'll now be moving to item number eleven point one, which is the public hearing. It's the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny major development, review, and conditional use permit for the development of a Chevron gas station and convenience store and the sale of beer and wine at Hamner Place. Gina, this will be your item to present.
Yes, indeed. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, for your consideration, is an appeal for the Chevron gas station and convenience store at Hamner Place. So a little bit to summarize the project. There are two applications, a development review and a conditional use permit. The development review is for the C store and the gas station, and the CUP is for alcohol. The Chevron C store and the gas station description is shown in the far right column, where there's about thirty-two hundred square feet for the C store, thirty-four hundred square feet roughly for the canopy itself. There are actually five pump stations with two each, so there's a total of ten. That's included in the agenda report, and I thought I would mention that in the PowerPoint as well. And then the type of alcoholic beverage license that they'll be seeking is Type 20 for off-site sales of beer and wine. Prior to this meeting on November twentieth, 2019, the Planning Commission reviewed this project, and there was a vote at the culmination of all of the information being presented of three to two to deny the project. The minutes are included as a part of the agenda packet, but I did want to summarize what some of the concerns were. Community outreach was one of the items that was mentioned. The proximity of the gas station to adjacent residences, the potential impact to property values, and then lastly, relocation of the gas station onto another parcel at the Hamner Place. So for reference purposes, this is the actual site. It's about one acre, located within the Hamner Place, and it's indicated in the red square there. And just as a refresher, this is the entry monumentation for the Hamner Place. This will be a lifestyle entertainment center that will have entry monumentation, and it's meant to create a unique experience for our residents and for other people who visit our community. Here is a copy of the plan view of the site plan. So what you see, any areas indicated in green are landscaping, but the building to the top of the slide there is the C station. And then you see the gas station canopy, the circles down below, or the oblong circular are the underground storage tanks. So there are five locations, two pumps each, and so ten total. Now, these elevations are actually revised from the Planning Commission, so I'll walk you through some of the particulars there. What you see here is just the entry into the C store. It is a Chevron with the extra mile logo. The building materials include stucco veneer and glass windows to create a more modern design. There's different types of stucco colors, both beige and dark gray and the accent. And so I just wanted to show you the front elevation and then the west elevation. And you see that there's also landscaping that's adjacent to the building that will climb vines on the side and the east elevation. And lastly, the north elevation of the C store. And then we'll move on to the canopy. And you can see the columns themselves also have the stone treatment there for the canopy for Chevron. And then the side elevation. Then we just wanted to clarify some information about the proximity. So here you have, on the very far left, is a representation of the nearest residence. And then, so there are three distances that I want to share with you. It's a hundred and sixty-six feet approximately linear distance to the front of the canopy. It's 166 feet approximately linear distance to the front of the canopy. So the canopy is not shown in this picture, but it's further in front of the actual C store. Then there's 112 linear feet to the front of the C store and then 63 linear feet to the back of the C store. So I just wanted to give you some perspective about distances. Now, the monument sign package typically follows the major development plan review, but we did want to share with the audience and with the council what the, some of the proposed signage typically would be. And so this is a copy of the monument sign and you can see that stone treatment is on the monument sign as well. And what we received from the developer were not the color versions, but proposed wall and canopy signs. So you see the Chevron name and then the actual logo. And then the extra mile portion, we tried to enlarge it so you can get a good idea of what it looks like, but you also saw the amount of elevations. And then what this represents is the letters, the A, B, C, and D represent the locations of where those proposed signs might go. Again, the sign package typically follows the site plan approval, so should the council decide to approve this item this evening, then the applicant will follow up with a copy of the sign package for review. So, one of the conditions of approval we wanted to highlight is that the pedestrian connections, meaning every person, every place that a person would be walking, needs to be well eliminated and defined with color concrete pavers and/or stamped concrete to create a decorative and inviting passageway. And then, just want to show the plan view of the site plan and then in blue is where the C store would be located and in red is the outline of the fuel canopy. It shows the line that you see is showing where the path of travel would be for a vehicle that would come in off a hamner, circle around the fuel canopy and then if they wanted to park, so that you see that a truck can make that turn. Now, specific to the alcohol, it's a Type 20 alcohol, as we said before, which is off-site consumption. And the area indicated in red is the, are the four coolers where the beer and wine would be located. That represents about 2% of the floor area of the entire C store building. Now, within the city limits, there are about 13 locations with a Type 20 or 21 beer and wine license issued by ABC. Now, of the 13, 11 are south of Belgrave Avenue and this project would not bring the census tract over the maximum allowed licenses. And for more information, this particular tract is 406.16, so you see it outlined in the graphic to the right. And it's south of the census tract boundary, Riverboat is the, is the boundary for 406.16. And the census tract has licenses for on and off sale, four for off, seven for on. And again, over concentration, should the council decide to approve this, would not occur. These are some of the conditions that are applied to all beer and wine sales, or requests for beer and wine sales in the city. Restrictions on size, the display, about advertisement, and about training and security. So our recommendation this evening is that the council would approve the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision, and, which includes the major development plan review and then also the conditional use permit. Now, the applicant is here in the evening and they also have a PowerPoint presentation. And then we also have information, should the City Council have any questions, we can answer those questions this evening.
Thank you, Gina, for that presentation. Actually, before we open the public hearing, just want to know if council has any questions for staff? Okay, we'll hold, then what we'll do is we'll reopen the public hearing and we'll go to public comment. So, Mark, is there anybody, I would imagine some people that are even here to speak on this comment, or this, sorry, this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have five comment cards. The first one is from Betty Wu.
Actually, hold. Erica, what do you, quick question?
Normally, the applicant gets to speak first.
Well, yeah.
But they don't have to if they don't want to, but I'm assuming.
Why don't we, that might be a better process, when we have, yeah, I think that'd be a better way to approach it first, so, thank you, thank you, Todd, for helping me on that.
Mayor Pla, council members, I'm Rick Manners with Lewis Retail Centers. I want to just give a few introductory comments, then I'll turn it over to Chevron team. But quick update on the project overall. You've probably noticed our first phase of grading is about completed, it should wrap up the end of this month. Second phase of grading should then be done by the end of February. We have five of our buildings in the plan check, we're expecting permits on those in February. And then those buildings should start coming out of the ground in May. We're anticipating getting those up and getting the shelves up toward the end of summer. So that's in, in general where we are. Some of the tenants that we're talking to now, Tony's Chop House, Prime Steakhouse is one of the major tenants coming in, Stavebridge Hotel, Old Cajun, I'm sorry, Lost Cajun, which is a Cajun restaurant, Papito's Mexican Restaurant, Chop Stop Salads, we have a juice purveyor. So we're excited about those tenants. Hero's Sports Bar is very anxious to get in. So that's where we are with tenants. And we're very excited to have Chevron joining the, the team here, joining the center. Couple of comments on that, I think staff mentioned in their report that through the original entitlement process and through the general plan, Chevron actually meets a number of the general plan goals. Opportunity for job employment, local employment, tax, generation, transportation, public transportation, local transportation, there is a bus turnout associated with the project. And since it always tends to come up, wanted to touch on traffic. Through the EIR process and through the conditions on the project, of which Chevron is a part, there are a number of mitigations associated with the local traffic situation, which the project will pay into. We have fair share under the Tump program to pay into a number of intersections and street improvements related to the project. So once those are said and done, we anticipate the traffic in the area should be well improved. There was also, as noted through Planning Commission, they were very concerned that local outreach in the adjacent neighborhood was done. So we actually teamed up, went out into the neighborhood physically door to door a couple of times this month and last month. And we've mapped the doors that we were able to knock on and the people we were able to talk to, or perhaps weren't. If I may... What that map indicates, the legend at the lower corner, lower right corner, the orange dots are people we were physically able to talk to and they are supporters. The support forms are attached to the back of the map. The greenish rectangle, those indicate homes that are renters. Those that we were able to talk to, we actually left a packet of information with our contact information for the homeowners. Most of those didn't respond to us. The blue circles, the two blue circles are people we actually talked to that are not supportive. And then the rest of them, especially along the edge of Mississippi, a lot of the others that are just with no mark at all, those are homes we attempted to talk to, but no one would have answered the door. So, all that being said, there's a total, there are a total of about 14 local residents in that neighborhood who are supportive of the project and Chevron in particular. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chevron.
Good evening, my name is Sergio Linares, I'm with CBRE, project manager for Chevron. And just wanted to go over a couple of the items that were of concern during the Planning Commission hearing. So I wanted to touch on neighborhood outreach, which Rick just did for us as well. There were some operational concerns that were brought up during the Planning Commission hearing regarding odors, fueling safeguards. And I was going to also hand it over to Gary Semlin, my architect, to touch on some of the changes and revisions we've made to the architecture and landscape. Just as Rick mentioned, he and myself went out to the neighborhood on Monday, December 9th, and again last week on January 13th, knocked on a few doors and had conversations with some of the residents. There were actually eight homeowners that signed the letter of support. And then Rick had some additional phone calls with six homeowners representing their support for the project. Most residents offered their, their pleasure in knowing that the station was going to be operated by Chevron rather than another operator. And I just wanted to point out that this would, will be a Chevron corporate owned and operated station, not a retailer or franchisee, anything like that. So going into some of the concerns on odors, vapors, and how we are going to mitigate those concerns, just wanted to point out that the California Air Resource Board has some of the most stringent regulations in the US and really worldwide. And we're definitely complying with all those. So part of the vapor recovery that occurs, it's two phases. Phase one refers to all of the, the tank filling. And phase two occurs when a vehicle is fueling. And these were, started to be implemented since 1987. So phase one vapor recovery is the reclaiming of vapors from a storage tank back into the truck delivering fuel. As a tank is filled through the primary hose, the vapors are pushed through a secondary hose back into the delivery truck. And you also see a vent right there on the left, there's another piece of equipment that goes there, it's called a Healy tank, I'll touch on that as well. So whenever the delivery truck is refueling, those vapors are recaptured back into the tank, minimizing the amount of discharge into the atmosphere. Phase two vapor recovery, when the vehicle is refueling, the vapors are pushed back through the nozzle and the hose through the dispenser and back into the storage tank. So the vapors again are contained within the storage tank. And since 2006, vehicles are equipped with a canister system that collects fuel vapors as the vehicle is refueling. So the vapors are, you know, again contained within the vehicle itself, minimizing the discharge into the environment. This is the Healy tank that is between the underground storage tank and the vent. The Healy system is a tank with an expandable bladder that allows the system to expand with the increase in pressure, preventing the release of vapors through the vent. Captured vapors are returned to the storage tank when the pressure returns to normal instead of being released through the vents. So again, everything's contained to minimize those emissions. Couple of little statistics here, before vapor recovery was introduced in 1987, fugitive emissions were 8.4 pounds of hydrocarbons per, per thousand gallons. And we kind of just roll down with the, the different phases of vapor recovery. Phase one and two reduces that to 2.4 pounds when you have phase one and two. And any vehicle that was produced after 2006, you know, further reducing it. And when we also take into consideration the Healy tank system that reclaims, reclaims the emissions there, the hydrocarbon emissions are down to 21,000 sub a pound per thousand gallon dispense, significantly reducing fugitive emissions to nearly 0%. Another area of concern that was brought up was regarding leaks and contamination of soil. So it's just a diagram of the underground storage tank. The storage tanks are double walled with a monitored interstitial space, and this has been the standard practice since 2005. The tanks are continuously monitored and shut down an alarm at the detection of a leak. Underground storage tanks, as well as the rest of the fueling, are inspected on a monthly basis by dedicated trained personnel, meaning that's their primary responsibility to go to all of our stations and inspect that, the integrity of the fueling system. This diagram shows that the blue rectangle there, that's the dispenser. There's also a under dispenser containment unit, so if there's any leak at the dispenser, it's contained within that unit that's underground and there's a leak sensor there. You have the same, same thing happens, there's an alarm that goes off, staff is notified of the leak and the system shuts down. And if there's any leaks detected within the piping that carries the fuel, there's two pipes actually that are part of the system that contains the leak and brings it back down into the sump, again, triggering the sensor, shutting down the system and letting us know that there's, there's an issue to be taken care of. The dispenser, the hose itself also has a breakaway feature there. So if somebody forgets to take their hose out of their, their car and starts driving off, it's not going to rip the entire dispenser out of the ground, it's just going to rip that hose off and I'm sure the noise will notify the driver that they forgot something. There are also some concerns about stations blowing up, you know, explosions at a gas station, so just wanted to share this one here. We had a customer who backed into a dispenser there. You can see the flames are pretty, pretty minimal, that's just fuel that's left in the hose or in the dispenser itself. The little diagram on the bottom left, that's a shear valve that's designed to break whenever something like this happens and it shuts off the flow of fuel, so you're not going to get a geyser of flames coming out of the, out of the dispenser there. And 2018 in Northern California, when we had all those wildfires breaking out, we had a station out there, the picture on the left, you can see the three buildings right there. Picture on the right, everything pretty much burned down with the exception of the fueling canopy. And on the bottom, you can see one of the buildings, actually that is the Chevron/McDonald's building right there. And the canopy in the back remained pretty much unscathed. So we were actually able to reopen the, the gas station within about two or three months, which, you know, was really great for the community. There's a Facebook post right there from some of the residents stating, "Never have I cried at the reopening of a gas station, but it's my gas station in my neighborhood and it made me happy." Somebody else stated that they cried, "The only place I'll be buying gas for a long time." So this was really beneficial to the community, it helped with the rebuilding because now you had first responders were able to refuel, you had contractors that were able to refuel, and residents that were still in the area had somewhere to refuel. I'm going to hand it over to Gary Semlin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. My name's Gary Semlin with StanTech Architecture. I think Gina and the staff did a wonderful job with the presentation, so I don't really want to spend a whole lot of time on it other than to maybe point out some of the changes that we've made to improve this project. So the Chevron station is part of this bigger center and landscape wise, everything's going to be tied in together. Two years ago, when we started discussing this project and putting it together, this was kind of a artist's rendition of what they thought that corner would look like. Not very good. It's not very good. Lot of blue on the canopy, and a lot of things that planning staff fought back on. And we ended up coming back with this, which, you know, it's a great entrance to the campus and the facility. And, you know, along with the landscaping and the screen walls, we've reduced the impact of the canopy. And I'll show that further. But, you know, there's not as much blue. It's got a gable roof on it rather than just a standard canopy with a flat fascia, a flat top. This is another one of the artist's renditions of within this facility and looking at the C store. That C store is slightly old because it doesn't have the mansard roof on it. But it gives you the same idea that we're really tied in material-wise, color-wise, with the entire shopping center. Again, the site plan, which everyone has seen. This might be maybe a little clearer, but the residences to the north of us, you know, they're approximately 35 feet from our property line. And then from the tanks, say, the center of the tanks, it's another 150 feet. So we're 185 feet from the nearest residence to the fuel tank. And we're approximately 160 feet from the building to the nearest dispenser. We placed the building there for a few reasons, but one, I think it makes a really good buffer from the neighbors. You know, we're going to heavily landscape that, and we can talk about that a little bit further. It puts the activity and all the trucks, the vehicles getting gassed away from the residences. And we feel that the, you know, 24-foot-tall C store building will be a nice buffer from light and sound from the residential areas. So we don't need to talk about signage. So this is the landscape plan that's specific for our site. And one of the conditions that we have agreed to is between Lewis, Chevron, the landscape architect and planning staff, we'd make sure that we fortify the landscape buffer between the back of the C store and the residences so that the trees can be strategically placed. We don't want to just put a big wall of trees because they may want to enjoy a view out of their bedroom or whatever. But that will be a focus of refinement, and we commit to doing that. Again, this is a section of that back area that we've shown before. So we want to put landscaping there. We'll make sure that's really nice back there and provides a good buffer from the center. And this is what went to the planning commission. We have agreed to go with the next version, which is this version, where it has a mansard roof on it that matches the fuel canopy. And again, the fuel canopy, one thing I wanted to point out on this is, you know, like most Chevrons that you see, the whole fascia is blue for the whole length. And we have worked it out with staff that, you know, the blue is only behind the white letters of the Chevron, and there won't be any blue on the side that faces the residences or the C store. That won't be illuminated with an LED strip either. And you've seen the floor plan. And this is some of the interior photos of recent stores that we've done. And it's really bright, cheerful, clean, and I think it'd be a great improvement addition to the neighborhood. And we're here to address any questions, comments you may have. We have people from our Chevron security team. We have store managers for this area. And if there's any questions further in the presentation, we are able to address those. So thank you.
Mayor Protem, you have a question?
I want to make sure I heard it correctly. Did you say no big trees?
We are putting big trees. We want big trees. But we don't, we want to do whatever the neighbors want to make that work. But we're planning on, you know, mature, whether they're, you know, 24-inch box trees that will grow. But yeah, we do want big trees.
I think that's actually my question.
The reason I said that was, at the planning commission, the rendering had this huge fir tree that, you know, it was going to take 50 years to grow. And we're putting things that'll grow earlier, mature earlier. Thank you for that clarification.
We'll now move to public comment. First speaker is Betty Wu.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Betty Wu, and I'm a resident of Eastville. I have some major concerns by hearing contradictory informations from the developer and from our residents here. I believe last council's meeting, Mr. O'Connor reported that he knocked on five houses' door just behind the planning location for the Chevron gasoline station. And at least four opened the door opposing the gasoline station. Why, the developers came up with eight support. So I plead the city leaders to investigate these discrepancies. With limited time, I'm going to just cite some of the points that I jot down for tonight. And I actually collected 120, over 120 signatures for opposing the gasoline stations from the neighborhood and from the parking lot here. We, the residents of Eastville, oppose Chevron's gas station and its beer and wine license at Hamner Place. What actually opposed is the location, not the gasoline station itself. It's the location of it, which is so close to the residents. Allowing a new gas station in a populated residential area is enabling a new threat to the immediate neighborhoods. It's literally as same as planting a time bomb next to the resident's home or yard and waiting it to explode some days. The underground gas tank is subject to leaks and smoke generated from daily gas refill trucks idling for a long period of time. These are all harmful elements for the residents and also increase the traffic for the area. The developer has the opportunity to move or readjust the location, then it wouldn't be, it would be less a problem. And I plead the city leaders to listen to the residents' outcry. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Next speaker is Edward Armus.
Good evening, everybody, city council, mayor, guests. My name is Edward Armus. I'm a resident of Eastville here. I'm the homeowner on 12573 Mississippi Drive, Eastville, California. My property line is located exactly 25 to 35 feet directly behind the pros development of the Chevron gas station. I stand here today to strongly, strongly oppose application number PLN 1820041. I have an 80-pound Yorkie, actually, an 80-pound Golden Doodle he opposes. I have a 7-pound Yorkshire Terrier he opposes as well because they're in the backyard with me. So gas stations have no business in residential areas for many reasons. They will decrease home values because no one wants to live near a gas station or raise a family near a gas station. Having a gas station directly behind residential would cause disturbances to residents' sleep. Like many of us, sleep is very precious, very precious. I already have personal insomnia issues myself and sleep disturbances. Putting a gas station behind me is just going to increase that. Living or working near a gas station, we know, causes health problems. And let me tell you a quick story. While serving in Iraq in 2006, I was exposed to toxic chemicals from gasoline on a daily basis. But let me be clear here. Our gas pumps were not feet away. They were meters, hundreds of meters away from our living space. However, that is not the case here tonight. They want to place gas pumps roughly about 150 feet from my residence. In 2012, I was actually diagnosed with reactive airway disease. The doctor notated that it was a 50% more likely than not. My reactive airway disease was caused by the toxins from chemicals from gasoline, from the exposure, the constant exposure. So let me just highlight that. A few facts that we already know. Elderly people, children, and those with disabilities like myself with reactive airway disease, we are at higher risk of developing cancer and other health conditions when working or living near a gas station. The Eastville Planning Commission, they've already opposed this. They've already said no. Another fact here, real quick, there's 15 gas stations in a 6-point-mile radius. If you head south on Hamner, we have three gas stations at a 1.3-mile radius, Chevron to be exact. Head north on Hamner, we have three more gas stations at a 1.2-mile radius. I drove it yesterday and got those calculations. Shortly here, I'm going to wrap it up here. Please take a moment, put yourself in my shoes, the shoes of the residents here in Eastville. Take a moment. Would you want to live near and raise a family directly behind a gas station? I am confident that you probably do not want to raise a family or live behind a gas station. So on behalf of the residents, we ask that you vote no and disapprove the application for the Chevron gas station. Thank you, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Edward.
Next speaker is Jaclyn Smith.
Hello, good evening, council members, staff, and residents of Eastville. So my name is Jaclyn Smith, and I'm here also to oppose the petition to build a gas station on Hamner Place. The request is that you carefully consider and oppose the Chevron gas station. We are quick to think about revenue because that's what I've heard, you know, the reason for the gas station is this revenue. And, you know, and we disregard health, right? I've had this conversation with my husband on different occasions regarding different things, like he wants to blow out and say, you know, he pays the bills and he does, you know, whatever that might be. And I always remind him, we have to think of the children of our children. So you may not live long enough to see the effects, but it definitely will happen. Now, I understand, you know, the whole logistics behind how to prevent the fumes and all that great stuff, but it does not avoid the circulation of additional traffic, air pollution, smog, and so on. I'm here to say that, you know, I do believe that there is a negative effect to having that gas station. And to reiterate on the numbers that the previous speaker brought up, is there is 15 gas stations off of Hamner in a 6.8-mile distance. That's an average of two gas stations per mile. And I don't understand why we would need another one. So again, maybe there is another space in Eastville where we can, you know, just spread out the station so it's not all in one vicinity where the air quality and pollution is being concentrated into these fumes of maybe just the traffic and not the development of the station. So again, we would like for you to carefully consider the approval of the gas station at the Hamner Place. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Next speaker is Michael O'Connor.
Good evening again. As Ms. Wu alluded to, I've come to you before and said that I personally have door-knocked the five houses that are on the south side of Mississippi from Hamner up. On the photos and the schematics you saw, we really didn't have any houses that went beyond that. I want to briefly tell you who I met, what they had to say. I'm going to start from the fifth house in and work to the corner. At 12553, I met Orlando, who's been a homeowner there since 2013. He said he was opposed to this project. The next house at 563, I met Sam, who's been a homeowner there since 2015. He said he was very strongly opposed to this project. At the next house, 573, I had a gentleman come to the door, and he said he saw positives and negatives. That home is the home that you heard from another speaker earlier today. The next house is 583. Her name was Shelley. She also expressed concerns about health and other things. And then the very most interesting one to me was the house right on the corner. The day that I door-knocked, I met Rochelle. She said that the homeowner wasn't home. She was away on an extended trip. In your package, you're going to notice on page 109 of your package, a statement from Kashonda Stinson. She is the homeowner of that property on the corner. She signed that in support of this project. I had a half-hour conversation with her today. I highly encouraged her to come here today to give you her input on how her signature ended up on that. I haven't seen her here, so I'm not sure she's going to be here. But basically, she appreciated the lovely cookies. They had a nice little get-together in her home. She talked about the problems she was seeing in her home from this project, which at the time had to do with cockroaches that were all of a sudden coming from everywhere. And then she said that the problem has expanded. She actually has rats, which I've talked to you guys about rats in the past. And when I was there today, there was an exterminator there for rats, and my understanding that that was provided by the developer. So they are stepping up that way, and that's really good. But I wanted to put some names and faces as best I could to you in the short time that we have, that, you know, my outreach to the community along the street that's there is they're not in favor of it. They have health concerns. The other thing that I've raised in the past is that this gas station is closer to residents than any other gas stations we have in the city. I think that's kind of bad planning. I just think it's a wrong place to have a gas station. And finally, in my background, I do real estate valuations on a regular basis. And I have always had to write down a valuation when there's a site impact, such as a commercial development or gas station. And I've never had a potential buyer ask me, "Could I have a house that has a gas station behind it?" Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next speaker is Andrea Hovey.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilmen. My initial concern with this project was the proximity of the gas station, so not Chevron in general, but the proximity to the residents. There isn't another gas station in Eastville that is this close to our residents. And I believe that it is your job and staff's job to protect our residents from things that we can't see. One of the things that I caught was that this was started two years ago. And I know that with the project on Archibald and Chandler, they came and did a community outreach and had a meeting here to see how residents would feel about McDonald's and whatever else on that corner. So two years ago, they're already grading, they're doing stuff there when they didn't have approval. And I'm wondering who it was that set the plans, decided that the community didn't need to be involved in that or provide them an opportunity to say anything about it. It is too close to our residents. It will decrease their property values. The homeowners that I have spoken with were not in favor of it. I do wonder, I didn't get to see that map, but I do wonder which exact houses they had approval from because the residents that I spoke to were not in favor of it. We do have too many gas stations. I mean, there's three right at the other end at Sixth Street and Hamner, and then we have all of them up at Eastville Gateway. So the concern was not with Chevron itself. If there is going to be a gas station, Chevron is the cleanest. But it was just the proximity to the residents and how it's going to affect their property value and how it is our job and your job to protect our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea.
That's the last comment card. I will note that we have, we received several letters of support that you have copies of at the dais, and there's also copies in the back of the public.
I have just a quick question, and it might be for Betty or Michael. I know you said you went out and gets part, is there any petitions or anything that we have that's in writing or signatures by chance that maybe they could bring up to the council? Just because it can be more just considered. Just because it can be more just considered arbitrary if we don't have. It'd be, because of the applicant, they do have that. They have the map and they have the applicant's signatures on that. So if you have something that's contrast, we'd like to see that as well. Uh, I'm gonna just allow if the pub, I mean, if the public wants to talk, uh, they feel free, they wanna make a public comment on this. I'm, because I'm about to go give it back to the applicant to maybe answer any questions. But if someone wants to talk on this, feel, anybody out there wants to take a three minutes? Sorry Edward, we can't. You've already spoke, but I apologize. Anybody else that hasn't, let me clarify, anybody else that hasn't spoken? Okay. If the applicant would like to answer maybe any questions that you might have heard in the public comments, we'll give you that time now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Jeff Wilson. I'm with Chevron and we do appreciate the opportunity and we do appreciate the community input. Um, we have a, a long history of developing service stations in partnership with cities all across the country, all across the world. Um, we clearly understand there are concerns about traffic. There are concerns about safety. There are concerns about the environmental impacts of fueling in general. Uh, just to reiterate the point that the, the fueling stations in the South Coast Air Quality Management District, let alone under the California Air Resources Board, operating under the most stringent environmental regulations in the world. Um, the alarming, the safeguards, the training that takes place to make sure that any of the neighbors, any of our customers, any of, any of the pedestrians that are associated in proximity to that station are protected to the maximum. Um, assurances as well for the controls and the penalties from violations from an environmental standpoint, from a municipal standpoint, uh, the rigors under which the, your fire department, what we call a COOPA, which is your area unified program agency that oversees all of our emergency response, is significant. Um, I'd just like to highlight that the architecture team, uh, Lewis Retail, the developer here, and Sergio from CBRE, there, there has been and will continue to be in the final shaping of this, landscaping, um, efforts and enhancements to continue to maximize the aesthetic value. I'd just like too to say that this station and its development is very unique to Chevron. We have probably an over rigorous branding requirement for our sites. The uniformity of colors, you saw the big deal about the, just the little blue behind the Chevron versus the white and the illumination. But this is really, uh, state-of-the-art and from an architecture and an aesthetic standpoint, it really, really is unique and we are proud of that. Um, we do take everyone's, uh, concern very, very seriously. And we do think that in total, the, the development itself will be a great enhancement to property values um, with the increased, um, retail and the combination of that. And we just, we do appreciate the opportunity for several years to be a part of the master plan and be envisioned as one of the key tenants in this parcel, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we will now officially close the public hearing and we'll turn to council for discussion and Joe, I'll start my left, I'll kind of push on the spot. Do you have any comments and questions?
Well, uh, just one thing first, um, if, if this project were approved, I would make a condition that, uh, the trees in the back that are between the residences and the, uh, actual structure would be, uh, at least like thirty-six boxes rather than twenty-four. We go with the larger, more mature. And I'm, I'm it's a, it's a very, uh, delicate dance with this. This is, uh, I, I'm very sympathetic to the arguments made by the residents over there. And it's really, uh, difficult based on the layout of this project where I could see a one-acre footprint somewhere else, um, for that, for this particular, um, business. It's, uh, it's pretty tough, um. I'm not sure that, uh, many of the health issues that have been brought up are maybe as dramatic as, uh, they've been portrayed. I know, uh, Edward brought up the, uh, issue with the respiration, but, uh, I think the, uh, the mitigation measures that are, that are put in place with a project like this, it's very unlikely that you would experience a negative impact from the vapors. I mean, I'm, I'm skeptical that that would occur. I'm, I'm sure you go into gas stations to refuel your vehicle, things like that. And, I mean, if you've experienced some kind of negative reaction, I could, I could definitely sympathize with you that, you know, this, this could be an issue. The, uh, property values, I get it. And that's with, I mean, this is a commercial development. There's gonna be a negative impact regardless of what's there. However, there's many other positive features that are going into the overall project that could offset maybe not completely. Having an appraisal background as well, I, I totally get it. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure the, the valuation issue is as big a issue as, uh, what's been relayed. But, uh, has there been consideration by the applicant to, uh, different site selection on here?
Uh, well, we've worked with, uh, Lewis Retail on, uh, the overall development. Um, and as part of the original EIR that was approved a couple of years ago, this is the site that was, uh, selected for a, a gas station with convenience store. I'm not sure that there is room to, uh, move anything around, uh, at this point.
What about, uh, from staff? Thank you, sir. From a staff perspective, is there a, is there a location that would, uh, on the, uh, site where maybe something could be flipped?
In my professional opinion, with over twenty-five years of experience, I would say that gas stations have the most success on the corner piece. And, uh, at this junction with the Heroes and the State Bridge Suites and Tony's Chop House, all of the development areas of, are, have been approved already by Planning Commission and City Council, so there wouldn't be another location that would be suitable at this point.
So it's not an option at this point?
I would.
Thank you.
Yes.
If I may, if I may, if, if it's allowed, um, during the process of this, we did look at positioning Chevron perhaps on the south side of Schlesen at that corner. But with the, um, Heroes and then the additional pads that are coming in there and especially with the parking setup to make sure Heroes functions properly, it pinched that pad down to where it's too small. Um, so it was really the only other viable potential within the center, so.
Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and, uh, pass along for some additional questions, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to the residents for being here and, and giving your input. Um, it's, uh, is very helpful for us to hear from everyone. Um, I'm just gonna go through my, my couple of list of things. I understand the concern of the appraised value, kind of like Councilmember Tsari said, the, the ultimate thing you have to realize too is, is that if there's a negative, um, value from the gas station. Um, I'm in real estate by profession also. I believe there's gonna be a very positive impact on this project. One of the things you look at in valuations is walkability scores. This is gonna tremendously increase the walkability score for that entire neighborhood, for our entire community in that area. Um, so it is, it is a trade-off. You're gonna have a negative by being super close to a gas station. You're gonna have a positive from everything else that comes with that, um, that, that project there. Um, one of my concerns is for those residents on the backside of this, this, uh, this project is the lighting. Um, just to make sure if this, if this were to be approved, I know that we've had some projects that have, uh, gone forth and have been built that we've had complaints of residents after the projects built of the lighting into their homes. I just wanna make sure that if we have an opportunity to address that now, that that's not gonna be an issue there. I know that you're talking about the landscaping and buffing up that landscaping. Um, I like the trees that we have up there i- in the, the elevations, but I just wanna make sure that and I wanna make sure it's on record that we are gonna have trees, if this does get approved, we are gonna have trees that are going to do such, rather than I think sometimes, um, sometimes developers will look to check boxes and they'll put in a tree and they'll put in a tree and, um, they'll keep the tree this tall rather than letting it get this tall how it's supposed to be. And they check the box of having that tree. Um, and we've seen them in our community. And I wanna make sure that if we do put trees in, that we do not get, um, that we don't, uh, we, we let those trees flourish to what they're supposed to be. Um, I, I wanna make sure that that's very clear because I, I've seen on too many developments in the city where trees were conditioned and these trees are very small trees because of the way that they're being kept. Um, if we're gonna put trees to block things to help the residents, then we're gonna do that to make sure that those trees are, are there. Question for staff on the alcohol portion of the license. Is this consistent with other, um, alcohol licenses that we've approved and applications that we've received, just the conditions that we have here?
Absolutely.
And even to the point of security and cameras and such?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think that's all I have for right now. I guess my big, my big concern is, is just the lighting on the backside of that building. Um, just to make sure that there's no, that it's more directional lighting and that if there is any lighting, that we have the landscaping to, to buffer that.
Yes, we typically ask the developer to prepare a lighting study at the plant check stage so we can ensure, uh, that, that there's what we now call light pollution or light spillage. Um, then there's also a variation in height and depth, so the residences are above the actual, uh, pad for the C store and for the canopy. So, um, but we can do the lighting study to make sure that neither the C store or the canopy have any spillage up and over to the residences.
Okay. And at the same time, I know it's kind of hard because we wanna make sure that there is enough lighting back there to deter things, but make sure that it's directional rather than just portraying out.
Yeah, what we can do is have a photometric studies, like Gina said. Um, out in the site in front of the store, we'll have yard lights that match the shopping center. They'll L, be LED and they'll shine down. It won't be spilling off. And we can put guards so that they don't spill off the site. As far as the rear of the store, I guess I would suggest we put wall packs, maybe in a pattern there, you know, because there's a pattern of landscaping and, and pilasters. But they'll be shining down to illuminate probably between the trees and the back of the store and not shining out towards the, uh, residences.
Okay. Thank you. The last thing that I just wanted to bring up was regarding a lot of the concerns that I think we have as, as residents. And I think a lot of these concerns come unfortunately, um, from the media. I think a lot of the time we watch movies and we see the big explosion from the gas station, that the car just bumped into the gas pump and it just exploded the entire thing. Um, fortunate, or unfortunately, we live in California, one of the strictest, um, regulated states regarding environmental impact items such as this. And I think that, um, that the state has done a good job in regulating the vapor control, the emergency shut-offs, all those things. And I think that's something that, uh, that I believe Chevron is committed to, but I think it's one of those things that regardless who the operator is, that they're almost mandated to make sure that all these precautions are, are put in place. So I think we're competing with media that's showing us on movies of, you know, there's these big explosions, things are getting blown miles away and, um, but I don't think, I think the regulations have tightened up so much that it, that picture that you, you showed, that that's kind of the extent of when an accident happens, for the most part, that you're seeing minimal flames because of the, the precautions that are taken into place. Um, but that's all that I have right now. Actually, I'm sorry, sorry. I do have one question. Speaking of that, and I, I don't, if he doesn't have the information, don't worry about it, but to put him on the spot on accidents that you have seen, um, Chief Vic, have you, regarding gas stations um, in the last, you know, whatever in the area, what has been your extent? Has it been big explosions? Has it been similar to what you've seen or, um, can you give us your professional opinion on accidents that you've seen at, uh, gas stations?
Good evening. And I, I think those are very good questions. In my, uh, twenty-six years in, uh, working for CalFire, I can think of very few incidents at gas stations and that, that's working in, in Southern California and Northern California at different times. Uh, I was conversing, uh, with Gina here. Accidents do happen, happen, you know, the, uh, there's, uh, everything is built to code and as, as stated, um, if, if all the applicable laws, codes, regulations are followed precisely, um, there's built-in safety measures. If, if, for example, somebody drives off with, as stated, or they're with the hose still in the car, accidents happen, but there's built-in safety measures to minimize. Um, so I, I want to, um, in my experience, like I said, very, very few variants I can recall. Um, and then the, um, we can certainly follow up i- if needed, but our Fire Marshal Sandy Hastings could, could speak more to following, uh, the code which the city, the city adopts, the two thousand and nineteen California Fire Code, uh, as, as you've all, you know, seen in the presentations. Um, Sandy could speak further that as far as following all the applicable laws, rules and, and so forth, but just to recap in, in my career, uh, mi- minimal incidents that I can recall, but we could definitely research further i- if the, uh, council would like and, and get back to with more information.
I appreciate your comment. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you, Mayor Plon. Um, so I spent a good deal of time on, on this, uh, item on our agenda today, uh, reading through, um, not only the, the agenda packet, but going back through and listening to the recordings. Um, a- and I wanna say that our Planning Commission does, uh, does great work. And a lot of the, uh, comments that they made wi- within that, that the project has improved since. Um, and that is reflected in the new proposal here, the updated proposal, and that is truly appreciated. Um, in, including, uh, changes to how the, the, the C-suite, uh, outside of the canopy, they match now with the roof, uh, line. That, that is, that is a good thing. Um, I spent a lot of time, uh, again, on this issue, just mulling it over, going back and forth. Uh, from, from the very beginning, uh, related to this project, I, we were informed that a big part of this project was, for the viability, was to have a gas station as part of it. Um, one of my questions, um, which was answered, but was asked again this evening about changing the location of the gas station within the, the property um, as not being viable and that, that my understanding is other, other places where they're at, that it's already been leased, uh, it's already in negotiations. Um, and so while I, I hear, I hear the residents and I might be, um, a little bit, it would be probably more ideal to be on the flip side of the property, how the whole property contained within itself, how it works. That is the location. Um, it is a concern that I have. Um, talking about lights, I, I really like the suggestion of, um, Todd, uh, or Count, or for, I, I wanted to say Mayor. Um, and, uh, ha- having the, the directed lights is gonna be helpful with, um, the LED, uh, usage also on the trees. And I, I did have a question about that. Uh, part of the discussion was, um, the, the box, uh, trees at twenty-four inch, uh, boxes. And the condition at thirty-six, um, I, I would really like to get feedback. I, I'm certainly not a gardener, uh, i- i- or, uh, I, I do not own a nursery, I should say. I, I do not own a nursery, I should say, uh, so my question is. What sort of trees, are there thirty-six inch boxes available for trees? Can we go larger? I don't know what that means in the height of a tree. Um, I don't know if anybody has an answer to that question. Yes, Gina?
Hi, yes, so, uh, in, uh, in development, you have several options. Down to the five gallon, fifteen gallon. And we're going in, in ascending, five gallon, fifteen gallon, and then there's usually what we call, there's twelve inch box, twenty-four inch box. Thirty-six inch box and the biggest forty-eight inch box trees. Um, the height that they are at twenty-four, thirty-six and forty-eight depends upon the species of trees. Um, but forty-eight is typically the biggest that they have, so thirty-six, usually, um, the general mix of twenty-four and thirty-six gives a good. A good balance and provides a good barrier, so.
Thank you for that. Um, I, I heard Councilmember Tesari, uh, talking about the, the thirty-six inches as being. Minimum. It, ha- has, I, I was, I would like to ask the developer if they have given any thought to the, the size of, of the trees.
Excuse me, um, we have and. In real simple terms, um, from my experience in dealing with landscape architects, although I'm not one, but. If you go to a nursery and you're tagging trees for development. You can go out and look for twenty-fours, you may find a twenty-four that's the size of a thirty-six. You may th- find thirty-sixes that are size of a twelve, so. The box size doesn't really get you there. But what we were just discussing, what we'd be willing to do is along that back strip to buffer the residents. We'd be willing to do specimen trees, which implies those are trees that are at a mature growth. They're, they're sourced through a broker, a landscape broker, so they are. Uh, the ideal tree, what you would like to see, it's a mature tree. It's going to be in the neighborhood of, you know, twelve foot to the crown and then the crown goes up from there and the spread is probably a twenty-foot spread. So they're basically mature trees. So we'd be willing to take that as a condition and do specimen trees back there.
I, I appreciate you guys giving that thought.
You're welcome.
And I, I think that. If this is to move forward, that would, that would be appreciated by the, the residents, um. Thank you. So again, I, I actually had a lot of my questions answered prior to this evening. Um, and usually I have a whole list of them and I've been asking them, so thankfully I don't have to ask them now. Uh, so at this time, I'll, I'll pass it off, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, yeah?
Similar to Councilmember Lorimer, I, um. Had to do a lot of study on this and, and had a discussion with commissioners. Um. And it's, it seems like a lot of us share the same concern, one of my top concerns was actually the lights, the light, the lighting and noise. Um, so with that being said, I definitely agree with Councilmember Tesari, if we were. To vote on this, if this were to pass, I definitely want some sort of buff, buffer, um, in between residents and. The gas station. It's, um. Whether it could be a tree or, or whatever we call it, but it's, it has to be some sort of buffer that blocks the lighting and the noise. And with that being said, speaking of the noise, what is, what are the hours for refueling trucks?
Um, so. I was doing a little, little research on that, uh, and the refueling, I mean, the, it's twenty-four seven. Uh, is what it can be. Um, I took a look at, uh, what we have across the street at the, uh, the Chevron station across the street here. And that typically has, uh, one truck, uh, a day coming for, uh, refueling. Um. That location has smaller tanks than what's being proposed at, uh, this location here at Hamner Place, so. You could probably anticipate, uh, a fuel delivery, uh, every day or two, every day and a half versus daily. Um, and as far as, uh, you know, the hours, uh, it, it, that's something that we can work on. Uh, to make sure that the residents are not, uh, disturbed for late hour fueling.
I will not support late hours fueling and, and I'm sure residents will not like it either. That, um, is there a way that we can s- put that on their, state that on the record?
Yes.
I'm even thinking like, I will not suggest anything past nine P M.
Get right back to you on that. Councilmember Rigby. I don't mean to interrupt you, Mayor Pro Tim, but just real quick, just off of that. Gina, can we condition the exact hours of refueling?
Yes.
Okay. And then just off of that too, do the trucks idle while they're refueling or are they shut off?
They should be shut off, but let me, due to air quality management district and also the E I R that was prepared, I do believe. Uh, stipulated that they don't idle, um, but I see that the applicant is at the podium, so I'll allow him to add.
Yeah, I did some lip reading, they, uh, they don't idle. And I got a head nod to the, uh, nine P M cutoff.
I. Personally, I am not a huge fan of the sale of beer and wine at that location and, and. Um, Gina, would you remind me, what would be the hours for this?
Sorry, for alcohol sales?
Yes.
Uh, six A M to two A M.
And if we were to approve this, are we approving the both of them together or can we separate?
By the bulk, could you elaborate a little?
Oh, both, yeah.
Yes.
I. I'm not a big fan of six A M to two A M, um, for many reasons. I don't think any alcohol. Or any stores that we have here in Eastville sells alcohol until two A M. In fact, I think the latest is only. Um, um, I, I know seven eleven, it's midnight, cause we just approved it. For liquor, okay, for liquor. My apology. So beer and wine at seven eleven is still until two A M. I'm good for now, let me re, let me think of, think through this part of, um, the item, thank you.
Councilman Belormore.
Thank you, and so as a follow-up, um, to the question asked by the Mayor Pro Tim. Um, what are the, the hours, uh, that this is, this comes in, I'm sorry, thank you Gina. Uh, um, this, this would be in conformance with other liquor license in the city or i- does this deviate? As presented.
Uh, Councilman, no, it, it does, uh, it is in conformance with the other liquor license in the city. The s- same conditions that we apply for beer and wine sales. To this one are applicable to the rest of the locations in the city as well.
And, and I, I wanna, I wanna agree, it is confusing with what just happened over at seven eleven, so.
I just wanna thank the public for coming out as well, our residents come out and speak up and, and, and share their testimonies as to why and the applicant. My colleagues also here for their, uh, their testimonies and, and. And some of the items they have addressed. Uh, yeah, thi- this is very, this is a difficult situation, um. I, I can feel for some of the residents and their concerns, I can understand the applicant as far as some of the facts they put out there as to why. I have different concerns and, and I've addressed this going a year, year and a half, yeah, about two years ago, we kinda met a while back. With the Lewis team and, and I wanna clarify, this project, the Lewis team has been more than just incredible on this project. They're delivering something that really no one thought we could have in Eastville, and that's, and that's ideally what's, what's going to happen. Um. I, the way I look at this project might be a little different than others, may- maybe not. But I, I really put this project on a high pedestal because of the locality of it, where it's at. Where it sits next to, a place that gets a million to two million visitors a year. We don't really have a destination spot. A walkable area, connectivity, all those things. And we are putting those pieces together with a four and a half star hotel with a rooftop bar, right, that can appeal to nightlife, an incredible fo- a steakhouse. Uh, Heroes, right, was it, which is a great place to go out and the, and, and a great Mexican restaurant that'll be coming out as well and, and other places. The way I look at this and, and I've, I've, I've expressed this, I don't think a gas station fits in that mold. I think the gas station fits across the street to an Al's Corner, where that Al's Corner used to be. I, I see it differently and I, and I see it to where there's just a lot of walkability, there could be other option there, maybe office space. There could be other things to do. And I, and I'll, I'll echo, um, our planning commissioner, Andrew Hovey, I think Chevron is the finest. It wa- as far as service, yes, that, there's no one that even compares to them, as far as the high qualities. I just, I, I see far past that as far as. What can this place really actually be? And, and we, we, we got the pieces, the pieces are happening. And it's because, uh, ideally it's because of Lewis, like it's because of the team putting together and delivering what we've been requesting as a city. I just don't think the gas station component is exactly what fits the identity of that particular location. So I'm looking more from a destination standpoint, a place of connectivity. And I think even, even as well, and, and I kinda asked some questions earlier with Gina, just kinda looking at aesthetics and I think you did a great job with the aesthetics. To try to make it best as possible to match the, the Tony's Chop House and to match Heroes and to match the rest of the layouts. But it's, it, it still doesn't, it just doesn't seem right, it doesn't fit what really we have, something very special here. And, and again, I may be on a, that you might be thinking way too big, way too large, but I, I just. I think there's something we could do differently, a little bit better, uh, on that. And it, it kinda hurts me to say that because again, because our partners with Lewis, because they've done such a phenomenal job on this. Um, but I wanna stand on my ground and say, I think there's something better we can do. And I think there is a place for, I, I disagree with people saying there's too many gas stations, I highly disagree, go to our gas stations, they're always, I'll sit five, ten minutes in a line. We still, that, there's still generated revenue to have that. So I would disagree on that aspect of it, just anecdotally, go to a gas station, you're gonna sit in Eastville, even with the Costco, with the twenty-four, thirty pumps, it's still. Full, right, so, um, I think a cross street outside of that lot would be a better solution. And you would still have the impact of getting the revenue, getting the civil aid component, getting the Hamner Place component, cause it's right across the street, I think that could be an opportunity. But I just don't see it on that particular lot. Um, and that, that's, and I, I'm gonna kinda stick my ground on that one and, and what I think is, is valuable there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I did have a, a question just to clarify in terms of the location. Uh, across, across the way, di- did you mean north of the fire station or south of the fire station?
Yeah, I mean the Al's Corner that is directly, um, right across to the, the fire station. Yeah, that would be north of the fire station lot, by the seven eleven, cross street from seven eleven, north of the, of the, of the fire station, correct. The Al's Corner lot.
Gotcha, uh, uh, ju- ju- just to.
No, no, I appreciate, yeah.
Thank you for that.
No, thank you. Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Councilmember Rigby, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, the. I understand the concerns of the gas station here. And I understand the quality of this project and I think it's a, a great quality project. The thing that we've gotta to take into consideration too is, is if we look at a different location. Most of our locations are doing, um. I mean, you don't technically call it infill, but it is somewhat infill, so if we go to these other locations. We're running into the same exact things, we're gonna get the same concerns from the residents. So it's one of those that we need to, as a council, we need to figure out. What's the right location and as residents, we need to realize that there's gonna be building in our backyard. And that's a lot of the thing that we get stuck with is, we don't want it in my backyard, I don't want it behind my house. But I want it behind your house or your house, but I don't want it behind my house. And that's the thing that we just gotta be careful of, because if we move it to these other side of Hamner. We're gonna have the same exact thing, we're gonna have the same five people that are gonna come, well, I'm sorry, not the same five people, we're gonna have five residents that are gonna come. They're gonna share their concerns. Um, I think this area needs a gas station. We don't have a gas station in this area, yes, there are a couple of gas stations in Norco there. Um, but they're also on the other side of the river there, um, in a different city. Uh, not the type of gas stations that we want representing Eastville. Um, I think this is. I, I think with the project, I think this is a, a good location, unfortunately, on the project, is it the best location? I don't know that it is the best location on the project. But sometimes we have to move things around and we have to sacrifice certain things, um, to get wins on other things. Um, and I, I think. I think Chevron and Lewis have done a great job in mitigating a lot of the concerns that a lot of the residents have. And the biggest concern that we are never gonna mitigate is I don't want it in my backyard, so that's just something that we have to take into consideration.
Mayor Pro Tim, yeah?
So question for staff, the proposed location that Mayor Plot brought up, um. Has, has that been considered?
The, the location, uh, that has just been discussed at the diocese this evening.
Yes.
Um, isn't a part of the Hamner Place, so the question that came up earlier was whether or not. There was another location inside that development. So this one has not been discussed, it's actually, it would require a new set of entitlements, an environmental document. And I might add, it's actually, by the time, the lot is smaller, so by the time you put that gas station there, if you were to consider it, I'm just. Looking at the area, um, letting you know, uh, what you would be considering, it's even closer. So, in, in terms to the residences. And, and it's on the same, uh, plane, whereas this one at least is separated and at a different elevation.
A- and to clarify, my, my concerns, you know, as, as, I don't. Again, I, I think there's plenty of restrictions in the state of California to make this a safe, very safe project. Again, my concerns are the aesthetics of the Hamner Place. That, that is, I wanna make that very clear, is how, what that project should look like and the integrity of that lot. And I truly believe that that lot has a lot of potential to create a lot of home value to that project, so.
Counsel, if I may, we do have some elevation, so if you do care to see that, uh, we do have those as well for the different. Projects that, I mean, for the different developments that are at the Hamner Place, so. All right. Let's take a look. So, uh, of those items that have been entitled at the Hamner Place, to your left, you see the Starbucks. And what is the continuing theme through them all is the color scheme and then you can see the extensive amount of stone veneer on the Starbucks. Uh, to the right is the Tony's Chop House. Um, has a more modern feel to it, but you can see the stone columns are picked up there, uh, at the main entry to Tony's. And then, uh, we have our Staybridge Suites, uh, so columnar, columnar design as well. And, uh, you can see the stone veneer is also there, differences in color palette as well. Um. And then lastly, we just have a couple for the Heroes Restaurant. You can also see, uh, the color changes, uh, the incorporation of the detail in terms of colors. And also the stone veneer there, and then one more. Another closer up shot as to what you would see, uh, for Heroes Restaurant as well, so.
So any questions for Gina on that? Alright, is there any questions or comments before we go to a motion or second? Would there be any questions or any ideas?
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the conditions of approval, um. On, and that's what we were just handed just recently, was, uh, the conditions of approval for this project. On the conditional use permit for the sales of beer and wine, item number twelve. Um. Security camera system for the convenience store portion of the project shall be installed and maintained. If this does go forward, I'd like to see that kinda tightened up a little bit, um, to the point of that. I don't know if it would be appropriate for law enforcement to help with, uh, positioning of the cameras. And I know some of the newer developments, we've also conditioned them with an e- with an additional exterior camera box system. That law enforcement has access to, I don't know if that's something that, um. That Lewis or Chevron would be, uh, willing to do. Um, I know that that's been very helpful in this. Um, I know that that's been very helpful in the city when things have happened specifically, um, any kind of theft or even accidents or anything like that, that law enforcement is able to access those cameras very easily. Um, so I don't know if that would be something that we could condition this project as we have others in the past recently. I think we did the merge, we conditioned it to have one of those camera systems.
If I may, um, on top of the cameras that Chevron will provide for their parcel for their building, Lewis, on our portions, we're also installing exterior cameras, um, to cover the plazas, the buildings, things like that. The system you're talking about, we're willing to put that on our portions.
Okay. Thank you. And then just the last thing, if, if we, if this were to go forward, if we were to do a condition regarding the filling, um, on the trucks, is there something that maybe Gina, from your professional experience, that you would recommend on a timing? I, I like the idea of Mayor Protem of, uh, nine P M. I just don't know professionally, I mean, I'm not a truck delivery person, so I don't know what typical hours or what would be reasonable, um, for that to be.
So, I haven't had an opportunity to discuss that with the applicant, uh, they did agree to the nine P M. Uh, so, uh, if it's a conditional use permit, you do have the right to condition it as you see fit. Uh, that's the beauty of that, of this particular land use vehicle. Uh, but you could also condition it in conjunction with the noise ordinance as well. I'd have to look it up to find it out, but the applicant has agreed to, to the discussion at the diocese this evening.
I just don't know how, how early in the morning that we go and we start that. Yeah, because we go from nine P M. to midnight, and then they show up at one o'clock in the morning, then it's kind of like.
Yes, sir, I do understand what you mean. So what, uh, should be done is we will modify that condition to be, uh, in concert with the city's noise ordinance, which has restrictions about early morning, uh, noise. So I don't, uh, have that document with me this evening, but I can say to you that we would modify the condition to be consistent with that, which is the same for the entire city of Eastville.
I think that, just off of my memory, I think that's, uh, six in the morning to seven P M. Um, during summer days, summer months, and then during normal, I think it's seven to seven or seven to eight, I think is what it is. So I don't know if we would have to adjust that to go a little bit later in the day. Um, I just don't want to handcuff them so that they're stuck on something, they can't go any later, if we're allowing them to go later.
Yeah, the later part, so I would, uh, we could structure it so that the nine P M. is the evening cutoff, and then the morning cutoff would be consistent with, with, right, that's what I was thinking, but I haven't, like I said, haven't had a chance to discuss that with them. But if that's your pleasure, certainly we can do that.
I, I might also add that in the case of an emergency of some sort.
Of course.
That, that they have the right to come in and fuel, like if there's an emergency in our community or something like that, so that they're not, you know, let, let some leeway a little bit in that, but for regular refueling, i- i- if it's not an emergency. And I, and I don't know what, what that would be, but, um, I just don't want to have somebody saying, why is there a semi truck there? Uh, we have to keep in mind that there's a fire station right across the street from this that has a decibel level coming out with the fire station a lot more than a, a semi truck air brakes or, or similar things. So, um, the, 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 the noise in the area is very similar, but, um, I think a nine P M. shut off would, would is appropriate.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, seeing that there's none, we will need to solicit a motion.
I would move this item for approval on both, uh, the, let me back up, I'm sorry. I would move both of these, the conditional use permit for the development of the Chevron gas station, the convenience store, and the sale of the beer and wine at Hamner Place, um, for approval. On the condition of the filling from matching our noise ordinance for the morning hours and not to extend past nine P M. Unless emergency and prior authorization from the city on filling. And then also for the cameras, for the, um, for the, uh, sale of beer and wine to be in, um, camera system and locations to be approved by or coordinated or whatever we need to with law enforcement, including the additional camera system box. And then also with the condition of the landscaping to be, um, worked out as was discussed regarding the specimens, I think is what it was referred to. Um, and to make sure that the lighting is directional lighting versus just putting it out there. I know that's a long motion, but.
Does everyone have an understanding of that motion? Is there a second?
If I could just get one point of clarification, so I have a, I pulled up a copy of the noise provisions in the online code. There's actually a few different sections that have hours of operations in it. Um, one, I think that you were referring to, um, has variable times depending on the season, uh, starting as early as six A M. or seven A M. Uh, others have a flat seven A M., so, yeah, I don't know which ones you were necessarily referring to.
I would say to make it simple, we just go six to nine P M., six A M. to nine.
Six A M. to nine P M. fueling of commercial vehicles is permitted. Okay.
And I don't know if the applicant is willing on that.
It sounded like you said fueling of commercial vehicles, did you mean?
Is permitted between six, say, six A M. to nine P M., it's prohibited from nine P M. to six A.
So, uh, for the fuel delivery to the tanks in the station.
Correct.
Eric, I have a quick, uh, question. We had closed the public hearing, but does that allow the applicants still to speak or is that just for the public?
It should, it should be both.
All right, you want to help?
Best practice would have been to reopen, it is a very common problem, so, it, it's, it's okay.
Okay, okay, just one clarification, so now we will officially close.
But as a general rule, if I could just reiterate, if you have questions for the applicant or questions of clarification for anyone in the audience, you should do so during the public hearing portion. Questions of staff can be asked outside of that motion.
Thank you for that clarification and the information. So we'll officially close the public hearing, which was actually already closed, but we'll close it again. And so we have a motion, we're very clear on what that motion is, is there a second? Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
No.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yao?
Yes.
Mayor Pla?
No.
Motion passes three to two.
Congratulations. We will now move to item twelve point one, the comprehensive annual financial report, known as the CAFER. Uh, fiscal year ended Ju- June thirty, two thousand nineteen, and I believe, Amanda, you'll be presenting this, this actually is special award.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members and members of the audience, Amanda Wells, Finance Director. Um, typically, this item for the city has been a receive and file. Uh, we pulled this out as an item for discussion. Typically, in most cities, um, a presentation from the auditors will be accompanied by sometimes a presentation from the city. I'm holding off on presenting any numbers, they are seven months old at this point. Um, I will present those numbers at mid-year on February twelfth, it will make a little bit more sense at that point. Um, what we're discussing is the CAFER document, which is a result of our audit with our independent auditors, Teamman Ramirez Smith. Um, and the document, I, I'm not sure if we've ever really talked about it here, but it, it has a transmittal letter and a management discussions and anal- discussion and analysis in it that's actually prepared by the city. And that discussion and analysis will tell you the differences between last year and the current year and why there were changes in our, our financial statements. The auditors actually prepare the financial statements and then put the entire book together for us, so. Um, we do apply for a CAFER award for this, and that will probably come back in about six months. Takes a little while for them to review it and come back and determine whether we have the award. So at this point, I'll turn this over to, um, partner from Teamman Ramirez Smith, Joshua Calhoun.
Thank you, Amanda. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would first like to accept my appreciation to Amanda Wells and, uh, the city's finance department for all their hard work and assistance in completing the twenty nineteen fiscal year audit. We have completed the audit engagement for fiscal year twenty nineteen. Tonight, I'll be discussing the audit report and the actual overall results. I'll be going over the scope of this, uh, our services, essentially what we are engaged to do and required to perform under, uh, audit standards, our opinion and related reports, implementation of a new accounting standard, and going over the individual reports and letters that are issued as part of the audit. We were eng- engaged to perform a, uh, financial statement audit, uh, as required by state law on the city's financial statements. In a financial statement audit, it, it is, uh, our objective is to develop an opinion of whether the, uh, figures within the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We accomplished this by performing, uh, tests of transactions and balances, uh, within your accounting system. And in addition, we also, uh, performed tests of internal controls, uh, and financial compliance, ensuring that the policies and procedures that were approved, uh, as part of the city's, uh, operations are being, uh, complied with. Uh, if along the way there is issues, uh, or concerns with those procedures or controls, they will be, uh, presented in the internal control report. But actually, our ultimate focus is, uh, to obtain sufficient evidence to support, uh, the financial balances within the financial statements or in the CAFER. In addition, we also performed to engage, uh, to do a preponder procedures, uh, in relation to the city's appropriations limit, otherwise known as the GAN limit. Um, with all that, we have completed the process and now be presenting the reports, uh, on those matters. Within the, uh, the CAFER, or comprehensive annual financial report, is our audit report. Uh, within, uh, within it, it states that overall management is responsible for the fair presentation and, uh, and presentation of the financial statements and our compliance. We, as the auditor, our responsibility is to provide an independent opinion on the financial statements to obtain, uh, reasonable assurance that, uh, financial statements are free of material misstatements. Uh, we have completed the process and have issued a unmodified opinion, otherwise known as a clean opinion, on the financial statements indicating that they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Within the report is a, what's called, referred to as an emphasis of matter paragraph, letting note that there was a change in accounting pronouncements. Uh, one of which, uh, this year, uh, GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, issues accounting pronouncements, uh, pretty frequently these days. Uh, one of which relating to disclosures relating to debts. Uh, this updated and, uh, expanded the debt disclosures required, uh, primarily relating to collateral in the event of a default, if any of those circumstances. Uh, these disclosures were implemented this year for the new Streetlight acquisition and updated to conform to the latest standards required by GASB. Uh, various other reports are issued as part of the financial statements, uh, incl- including with the audit report. One of which is the report on internal control and financial compliance. This is required as part of, uh, government auditing standards. Uh, it's used to communicate any deficiencies in internal control or issues concerning financial compliance significant enough to warrant your attention as a governing body. Uh, we do a high-level review of all, uh, processes and procedures of all the major areas of the city. Uh, but we, at this year, we actually actively tested controls, uh, over disbursements, billing, planning fees and receipting and payroll, and no significant issues or other findings or exceptions noted as part of those procedures. The other letter that is, uh, issued is a communication of those charged with governance. Uh, two forms of this are issued as part of the audit process. One, during the planning stages of the audit, uh, which was given to, uh, to council back in June twenty nineteen, discussing the plan, scope and timing of the audit. Within the conclusion letter, that we wrap up at the very end of the engagement, we let, uh, let you know that management is respons- uh, responsible for the selection and use of accounting policies and that are described within the financial statements or in note one of, there of. A few examples of, uh, accounting estimates are with, we use within the financial statements are fair value, uh, estimates. Uh, as part of our, uh, audit process, we review the, uh, valuation, uh, of those subsequent investments, making sure they're in compliance with the city's, uh, investment policy and with state law. Uh, other areas include capital assets, uh, making sure that, uh, land purchase is properly valued, uh, data, uh, data purchase. Uh, net pension liability and the O P E B are, uh, he- heavy estimates based on actuarial evaluations. Uh, we would look at the assumption, making sure they are properly valued within the financial statements. The other sections of the letter include, uh, any difficulties encountered with the audit, there was none. Uh, and there was no, uh, significant, uh, adjustments necessary to make the financial statements, uh, properly presented. The last report that we issue is on pre- preponder procedures, uh, relating to the city's calculation of the city's GAN limit or appropriations limit. The appropriations limit is a restriction on the amount of tax revenues an agency can receive in a particular fiscal year. This is adjusted annually on a per capita and growth, uh, basis and approved by council annually, uh, by resolution. As part of the state constitution, it is required that the independent auditor issue a report, uh, ensuring that the calculations and factors used in that calculation is correct. Uh, we have reviewed, uh, them and they are calculated properly and no exceptions were noted, uh, within those. Uh, that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Real quick, was it Josh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got the, catch them. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for the, the detail that you laid out. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to say congratulations, Amanda, and our finance department for putting together another great, uh, a good rating, so on our, on our, uh, on our finances.
Thank you.
This is kind of like their Super Bowl, so they deserve a standing ovation.
Well, I, I mean, we'll give a round of applause, it is, it is, it's, it's actually, I, I'm gonna make a comment real quick, if you don't mind. You know, it, it is, it's obviously, and it should always be a city's top priority, but it is one of our top priorities to, to have a sound, uh, fiscal responsible city, right? And to be on top of it. In the meantime, also using the investments to, that you have to spend to, to take care of your city as well. And so, thank you for putting us in the right direction and the guidance that you've given us, so we appreciate that, so, thank you.
And, and thank you to Josh and his team, they, they spent hours here with us and, and worked really closely with us to make sure that everything is, uh, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and they look pretty deep, so. Uh, I, I know it's a very stressful time for them and our staff, uh, during that process, but, uh, we appreciate their, their friendliness, uh, being auditors, because it's not always received that way, so, uh, uh, it's a great partnership.
Sorry, Josh, I just know Amanda pretty well, I don't, I, this is the first time I've seen you, so, so I would thank you as well. I, I, I appreciate you taking the time with our, with our staff as well and making sure that we're sound.
Pleasure.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was just a receive and file, so we will move to item twelve point two, contract award with GMC Engineering for Schlesman Road Extension and Hamner Place Storm Drain Project. This was submitted by Gina and will be Bill to be presenting.
Yes, Mayor, it is Mr. Hemsley.
Perfect, all right, Bill.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item before you is another milestone for the Hamner Place project, so. Uh, this is going to be for the award of the Schlesman Road Extension and Hamner Place Storm Drain, uh, to GMC Engineering. Uh, we're, just a quick summary of what the work will be, will entail, uh, about fourteen hundred linear feet of storm drain, nine hundred linear feet of water to be placed in the Schlesman Road Extension and on, in Hamner Avenue. Uh, this, this shows just a quick summary of the, uh, street improvements. So there's about thirty-one thousand square foot of asphalt pavement, eight thousand square foot of pavers, and twenty-nine thousand square foot of concrete walkway that'll be installed with this portion of the contract. Timeline, uh, in October of eighteen, council ordered a contract to Webb to design the improvements. Uh, Webb is here, uh, to answer any questions if needed. Um, December of twenty eighteen, council approved the parcel map for, uh, Hamner Place project. Uh, entered into subdivision improvement agreements with Lewis. January of twenty nineteen, council entered into a joint improvement agreement with, with Lewis for Hamner Place. June twelfth, council omitted the general plan to remove Schlesman Road interchange, which, uh, changed the characteristics of this project. Um, October of nineteen, council vacated right away, dedicated right away for the. October of nineteen, council vacated right away, dedicated right away for the new Schlesman Road alignment. November nineteen, council omitted contract with Webb to add landscape design and modifications for the new road alignment. Bids were advertised in November and then January sixteenth, they were opened. This shows the bid results. There were three bidders. GMC was the lowest, at about three million dollars. GMC, their references were checked and they are a good contractor. They have a valid contractor's license. And they qualify as the lowest responsible bidder under state law. And their, their bid, we were fortunate to have a great bid. They're just underneath the engineer's estimate. So, with the award, the contractor is ready to go. They've already submitted their insurance and they'll sign the agreement soon as council signs it. So, we're looking at the schedule of beginning July for the underground work, end of August for the hardscape work. And then once Edison moves the pole that's in the alignment of the roadway, then the pavers will be installed about fifteen working days later. With the budget, there's two sources of funding for the project. One is a storm drain fund, which comes from Zone Two Riverside County Flood Control District. We had anticipated a total amount of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand about. With this bid, we will need about another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to complete it. And so, staff will return to the Flood Control District, Zone Two, and ask for the additional funds. And we will return to council if we are successful in that, to make a budget amendment. There is funds set aside for this project. And we have about three point seven five million. So we have a total of four point six four million available. So there's sufficient funding available to award the contract tonight. Expenses shows that there's a total of three point seven million that'll be needed with, when you factor in construction contingency and construction management and the design costs. So, the recommendations for council to consider tonight is to approve the contract with GMC in the amount of about three million dollars plus contingency of about three hundred thousand dollars. Authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents, including a notice of completion once the project is complete. And, and after all inspections are complete, that notice of completion will be used thirty-five days later. They will receive their retention. So that concludes my report. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Real quick, we'll just check, Mr. Donahue, is any public comments?
No, Mayor.
I will turn to council for discussion or any questions. Okay, seeing that there's none. Yeah, Councilmember Lorimer.
Appreciate it. So, looking at the different, the bidders and the different bid amounts, how is it that some are so high compared to the one that we've arrived at? Any explanation?
It's, it's all based on market. I think, I, I honestly, I'd just be guessing to tell you, you know, but, because the prices are really good. Especially the storm drain prices, their, their GMC's prices are about half of Hillcrest. So, I, I don't know exactly why they're, but I mean, it is, it is the engineer's estimate. So, you know, there are numbers to justify what GMC came up with, but others were much higher for some reason.
So with that, you know, that these are estimates that, that they're putting forward, the ability of the city to be protected in, if they come back with, oh, here's, here's a change order, for instance, saying this, we estimated wrong. Is it on them or is it on us?
It's on them.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have good specifications. We go by the green book. So, I feel pretty confident that we shouldn't have any major change orders with this project.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lorimer, having dealt with contractors most of my career, especially in a good economy right now, sometimes contractors will say, I don't really need this work, but if you want me to do this work, it's gonna cost a little extra because I'm gonna pay the people overtime because I'm really busy. And so, if no one else bids, I might be the only bidder, or maybe everybody else is busy and they bid high too. And so, especially in a good economy right now, you're gonna see prices all over the place where people are hungry for work or really want to keep their crews, or they have bigger crews, or they have a break in projects, or they just lost two projects, and they need to keep their crews busy. And so, it, it all depends on timing. We were working really closely with the contractors on this bid process and getting a lot of feedback. That's why we had so many amendments through the process based on their questions that were coming in. And we saw how two other agencies were doing some pretty big bid projects in December. So we delayed our bid opening to allow other contractors to bid on our project because they wanted to see if they won the other big projects. And, and the ones that didn't, all of a sudden became really competitive with our bidding process, so.
To echo that, what Brian had said, that is a hundred percent accurate, right? Just working in kind of a similar, not similar field, but working, you know, putting out contracts out there. If you're busy, you're gonna, you're gonna bid high because you're just busy. That's exactly, I think that's very evident of that, so. Is there any other questions, comments? Thank you, Councilmember Lorimer, too, for that. Appreciate that, the due diligence. All right, well, seeing that there is, well, seems like we're done with discussion, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Yes.
Mayor Pla?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Actually, I need to make one clever question. I made a mistake on item twelve point one, just for the record. Was there any public comment for item twelve point one? I never asked for it.
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will now move to item twelve point three. Contract award with Right Way Roof Corporation for, for the twenty twenty roof repairs to the city-owned facilities project. And again, this will be presented by Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. So a little background on this project. Eastville Fire Station number twenty-seven, which is located on Hamner, across from Hamner Place, pretty much. It was opened on September twenty-one of twenty-eleven, constructed by Rick Construction, designed by STK Architecture, funded by Riverside Economic Development Agency. Had a ten-year warranty. And then things started happening in twenty sixteen. There were several leaks that occurred. Report was made. Riverside County Fire Department attempted to claim the roofing warranty provided by UMACO, but they, they had filed for bankruptcy on May second of twenty-twelve. And their license expired in April twenty thirteen. So due to these combining factors, the fire department wasn't able to go after the warranty. And they hired Tech to America for the first repair, which was done. And then they also had, a year later, within a year, had some repairs done by that company. Then Garland Company came out, did a assessment of roof in twenty eighteen, showed thirteen leaks throughout the station. R and R Roofing completed the second repair in twenty eighteen, and they also came back and provided warranty work. And then another report was done in October twenty eighteen, when the roof started to leak again, so, over the captain's office. So, now the, the roof is leaking once again. And so, we have, now have a red tarp over the roof. And until we get it repaired. And so, unfortunately, because we're not able to go after the warranty, we are recommending, we also asked our insurance company if they, if this could be covered under insurance. The only part that the insurance will cover is the damage inside the building, not the roof. So, this shows a street view of the fire station. And then, we also, when we went to bid to do this repair, we considered, when, when we did the mandatory pre-bid job walk, some contractor said, well, why don't you consider replacing the clay tiles with concrete tiles? And so we did add an alternate bid. So you can see they can be fairly similar. That's just a photo of a, a house with concrete tiles. So they're, from a distance, they're pretty similar. And I guess they're a little cheaper than the clay tiles. So, the, the current bid, the base bid is to remove the tiles over the living space area. The, the, there's no leaks over the engine bay area. And then put them, set them aside, replace the underlayment, the flashing, and then put the, the tiles that survived the move back on, and then replacing tiles that, that were broken. So that's the base bid. An alternate bid is to replace the whole roof, so it all matches with concrete tiles. When the Offlitch House was built, there was an understanding that it had some age issues, needed some maintenance in some areas. And so, there's, there is a, a leak on the house by the chimney. And then also the garage had a leak and there's some tarps that are put on it. Assessment by the chief building official is that the roof is fairly aged and probably is a good time to replace it if council so desired. Otherwise, the base bid is just to make the repairs of the roof for the house and the garage. So, the scope of work again is remove and replace the roof underlayment, any damaged roof deck for the fire station. Remove and replace existing clay tiles and install new tiles if needed, over the living space only. The alternate bid is to do the whole roof with concrete tiles. And then the off-litches, two leak repairs. And the alternate bid is to replace the whole roof over the garage structure. So, here's a summary of the bid results. There was a couple of issues. One of the bidders, ERC, had misunderstood the bid and provided an additive alternate, which, when you just do an additive alternate, everybody else is doing an alternate, their price appeared lower. But in fact, when you add what they intended, which was to add what they had put in their bid plus the base bid, their bid came in at four ninety-five. So the low bidder was Right Way Roof Corporation. When they submitted their bid, they, they left off eight thousand dollars from their bid, so it was a math error. And so, we're recommending that council waive that, that bidder. So the, the bid amount is the base plus alternatives. It's not what would be awarded. It's just to give a competitive price across the board for all the work that was being proposed. And so, the base bid listed here for Fire Station number twenty-seven, for the low bidder, is about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. For the Offlitch property, it's about seventeen thousand dollars. And then the alternate, which is to replace the, the, all the tile with concrete tiles, a hundred and seventy-four thousand for the fire station. And twenty-five thousand for just the garage roof. Right, Right Way has been in business for twenty-seven years, has a valid contractor's license, have good references. So, the options for council to consider is just to award the base bid only, which is just doing the living space, clay tile, remove and replace, and just the repairs at Offlitch. And there's other options to do the alternate bid for Fire Station number twenty-seven and just the base bid for Offlitch. And then, option three is to do the base bid for the fire station. And then, and then the repair of the, the Offlitch House and the alternate bid for doing the garage at Offlitch. The last one is alternate bids for both of them, except for the repair at Offlitch, which was, didn't have an alternate bid for the house. So for the, this table shows the different funding impacts for the different options. Just doing the base bid, be a hundred and forty-five thousand, six sixty-five for the fire fund, eighteen thousand, two eighty-six for the general fund, just doing the base bid. Option two, as you can see, the numbers are up there, I won't read through them all. It's up to council to decide which option works best for you. Fire Station twenty-seven, by doing the alternate bid, will add an additional forty-five thousand dollars, seven, forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars for the, replacing the whole roof with new concrete tile, which would be a longer lasting roof. And then about another additional twenty-two thousand. This is including contingency on these numbers. And the overall, probably more permanent cost with the additive alternates, with the alternate, sorry. It would be about sixty-seven thousand dollars more. So, there's, here's the recommendations based on the options for council to consider. That concludes my report. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Would you mind going back to the slide prior real quick? Just want a few clarifications. Just so I understand correctly, so the option one is, is to repair? So if we're talking about the fire station, option one is to repair the, the clay tiles for the, for the fire station and then the, the general, and then the Offlitch property? That is also to repair just the, everything but the garage. Is that correct?
That is repairing the garage as well.
Okay. Option two, a hundred and ninety-one thousand, that is to use cement tiles, to replace the entire roofing for the fire station. Cement tiles, and then same thing for the, well, yeah, same thing as option one.
Right.
So the forty thousand, so when we go to option three and four, we're talking about the, the Offlitch property, the general fund, that forty thousand, what was that, what is that?
Just repairing the house roof and then replacing the garage roof.
Okay. Thank you. Any question, or, actually, can we go to public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have one public comment from Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor.
On this actual item, kind of ties together a couple of things we've seen and heard tonight. On the most recent item, before, there was a question about, well, if they're wrong on a quote, what happens? And what it really comes down to is making sure that we have a very good quote system, which I'm hearing we do, which is good. And then making sure we're doing proper inspection. And we heard from somebody earlier in the meeting about problems all through her house. So, unfortunately, it seems like we're a victim in this case of a contractor that wasn't doing the right thing, which is a shame. But I thought it was interesting that a number of things have come together on this item. If I were looking at this, I would probably be going with, I think it's option two, which is, let's just redo the roof on the, the fire station. We should not have our firefighters under rain. And because of the questions that I have about how well the job did they do ten years ago or nine years ago, you know, is it just, should we just redo it, make sure we have a good roof and it's done? That's what I would probably do with the fire station. With the Citrus property, I personally had seen the leakage when I went to the Cosetja event up in the corner, and I was like, okay. So I know we have something there, and I do think that the recommended repairs for that are appropriate. The garage, I probably would not do anything other than the minimum because we don't yet know what our plans are for that property. And I think you can get a flat roof repair done and hold for a little while until you figure it out. Because ultimately, as a city, we might decide that building's not the right building and it's just a garage. So I wanted to just give my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
No more public comment?
All right. We'll turn it to our council for discussion. I can always switch it up. I go the right next time.
All right. Well, I'm looking at it and it's basically, it's forty thousand out of the general fund. Forty thousand, three hundred and forty to just do the complete job, both properties. Is that correct?
That sounds pretty reasonable to me. I mean, because the fire fund, it's a, it's a, it's a restricted fund. We can only use it for certain things. So I think this is an opportunity where we can actually utilize the fire fund for something and get the mission accomplished at minimal expense out of the general fund and just be done with it. So, I mean, and I, I So, I mean, and I, I get Mr. O'Connor's point. He is correct. We do not know what we're gonna do with the, uh, citrus property. But we're talking twenty-two grand? Twenty? Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm good with two and I'm, I'd also be willing to go with four. I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr., sorry for your comments. I echo your comments that I think it's, um, we need to make sure we get these taken care of. It is disappointing that the contractor that was used on the roofing, uh, for fire station twenty-seven is no longer in business. Uh, well, I take that back. He is in business. He's no longer in business under that name. Um, which is disappointing. So we have no repercussions to the GC on that project?
Um, I had asked staff to provide me with the, uh, contracts that the county executed, but I was not given them. The county is, had difficulty locating them. So I can't give you a full contract analysis of our contractual rights because the county can't seem to find the contract, unfortunately.
Okay. But if that's something that we, we do find eventually or whatever, cause I would imagine that there's some responsibility that lies with the GC even though that the roofing contractor is, is going.
Possibly, but the statute of limit, so the, in general terms, for any patent defects, so defects that could have been discovered with a good inspection, once you accept the facility, your ability to go after them for, for those is gone. Uh, there's a ten-year statute of limitations on latent defects, so defects that aren't, you know, visible to, to the eye. I, I don't know whether this falls into the patent or latent defect category, but if it was a latent defect, we would have ten years. It was built in twenty-twenty-one, so we're down to about a, a year, twenty-eleven, excuse me. So twenty-twenty-one would be when the, um, the statute of limitations expires.
And I think on the fire station, I think that we, over the last few years, we have tried patching and every time they've patched, they've had to come back out for warranty work and tried to chase another leak and then they fix it.
Which is also a problem with going after the original warranty is if you allow others to come in and do work, it can nullify the warranty as well. So there are multiple complications.
I thi- I think regardless of, of having to go back and forth and patching and fixing, I think we just do it all right, the right way, I think, as well as the, the clay, clay versus the concrete tile. Um, it's not a, a huge cost and I think it just, the concrete is better as it's more sturdy. Um, you get people up there walking on it, doing maintenance, whatever, that's what's gonna cause your clay tiles to break. Concrete tiles will be a little bit more sturdy. My only question with that is, is, is there any weight difference? I'm sure you guys have looked at all this, but is there any weight difference that can cause any issues of, um, structural issues?
Uh, the chief building official is aware of this, but I didn't ask him that question. He didn't seem to have any concerns about the weight, but I will verify that.
Okay. I just wanna make sure. I know in some homes that you see tough windows to open and close or doors is typically after they've loaded a, a new roof on. And I just wanna make sure that there's no difference in the clay that's gonna cause any issues structurally.
I'll verify that.
Thank you. On the off-lit property, um, that's what I think. No. On the off-lit property, I, I would agree that we aren't a hundred percent sure what we're gonna do with that, especially the garage. Um, if we're gonna keep the garage, get rid of the garage, use the garage as storage. My only concern is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but it's twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars in addition to replace that roof. Isn't that what that is? I think it's on slide six.
So that's a, that's an alternate bid, so that's the price for replacing.
So if we were just to repair that, do we have a cost on that versus replace that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a portion of that, um, sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-four.
So it's a portion of the sixteen thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, my only concern with not replacing the garage is, is I, I know we may not know what we're gonna do with it, but every time we get rain, there's that additional possibility now of getting mold. You get mold, you get dry rot. Then if we decide to keep it, or even when we decide to take it down, if there's mold in it, it's gonna be a whole lot more expensive to eradicate and to remove that garage than it is if we were to take care of it now and if we were to use it. I think for the twenty-five thousand dollars, I think if we were to use it at all, I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars well worth spent. Um, like I said, because even if we do take it down, down the road, and if they come in and find mold in it, now we've got to eradicate that mold differently than just a normal demo process.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so all this talk about the garage. What, what is the garage being used for? Are, are we using it for anything right now or is it empty?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
The gar- that particular garage is empty at this moment.
Is it because it's leaking or is it because we?
Well, I mean, we could store stuff, we, we could store stuff there in the future, but right now it is empty.
Okay. Uh, where, where the leaking is occurring, is it going, is it causing other damage to the walls or anything like that? Is a pool in the middle of the garage?
It's toward the back of the garage, so it may be causing an issue in the wall.
Okay.
And the ceiling tiles.
Okay. Um, I had another question, but I didn't write it down and it will come to me eventually. Thank you. It's so, it, it's, uh, it's tongue in cheek, but it's serious. So the, uh, it, I appreciate on there, that on the bottom of this slide, actually, Right Way references are good in business for twenty-seven years, valid contractor's license. They're not re- nearing retirement, right? But I, I'm serious.
No, I don't, that's, I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for the presentation. So I, I just have a, a few questions before I get into the option. Um, you know, reading the report, learning the history on, on this and I think kind of going to Brian, so I think, you know, part of the, it sparked a question, you know, when I look at the lowest bid. Um, but again, I, I think there's explanations of why the other bids are high because of the economy. You know, when we go in around that time, you think about it, you go around that time, people are still struggling for business and getting in, you get the lowest bid. And I know that's always important, but the one thing, low bids usually cut corners. And, and I just wanna make sure, and I, and I trust every decision that staff makes, that we're doing our due diligence with these vendors and we, we just don't wanna reciprocate over and over again where we go the lowest bid, but we, yet we're not doing the due diligence. And we have, you, you said you had mentioned their, their criteria, and, and how long they've been in business and that their references are good. Just, that's always concerned me because again, if a company goes bankrupt, there's not much you can do. You know, and they could start up another company. Doesn't matter, it, it wasn't the company that went bankrupt. So, um, just, you know, when we look at these things, I think we can learn from the awesome presentation you guys put together, what we maybe need to be careful how we avoid and, and look at those lowest bids. With that, real quick, I, I just, to kind of put more perspective and to kind of put more, it sounds like, it sounds like I know where the council's probably going with this, but I had to ask Amanda a question, if she can just pull up what our fire fund reserve is and then what we plan on anticipating for this year in our fire fund, just to put it in perspective of what we, we would be spending if we did option two or four on the fire fund, which is a hundred ninety-one thousand. To put that in perspective, what we're actually at right now in our fire fund.
So without actually having done projections yet.
Yeah, and I apologize. I put you on the spot, my ass, yeah.
But, uh, as a part of last year's budget process for the current year, um, projected fund balances are, are taken into perspective in, in the book. So there's two point one estimated projected fund balances of July first, which is going back seven months. And then with all of our expenditures that are estimated to be going out and the revenues estimated to come in, the estimated fund balance at June thirtieth is six point six million. So there should be plenty there, even if we exceed revenues or a little less revenues, we, we should be fine.
Just add to, to, to add more of the perspective, it wasn't to, you know, just to, to show you kind of somewhat miniscule when you look at the whole scheme of things. I mean, it's important to take care, and it's also very important to take care, uh, of our firefighters in the station, so. Uh, yeah, I, I, I kind of, yeah, I, I like Councilmember Rigby's comments as far as looking at the option four is, you know, we, we knew when we were buying the off-lit property, the reason why we got for the price we got it was partly these, these concerns that we, we, we were aware of, right? So, um, you know, not knowing exactly what we're gonna do with that property, but I think the remediation aspect, if it turns to mold, it's up against the wall, you don't wanna create a further problem to, you know, something that would cost you more money, just having to remediate the potential problem there and then going into other walls and other tiles, so. Um, yeah, I, I think it, it probably best to just look at that option four and, and just, just knock this out and take care of the situation and not have to, not have to deal with it. And, uh, somehow make, to make sure that, uh, Right Way is, will not go bankrupt. No, they'll be good. They're actually, they're actually reputable company.
And I want to mention also, we will have, um, the building and safety department will issue a permit. We'll be providing inspection of the whole process.
Actually, to that point, Gina, and Bill or Gina, I, I know we had discussed earlier, you know, kind of maybe the differences between then and now. Uh, you know, we kind of discussed that a little bit as far as maybe some of the concerns that happened then to now and what would be different in, in securing, I don't know, I'm looking at either one. You can, the one you can take, what kind of what, we're doing differently now.
It was done by the economic development agency for, not sure how the inspection went. Obviously, there was probably some issues. Uh, so now we're gonna have our building and safety department, which does this every day, um, highly trained professionals. So I think we have a lot more confidence now and then, of course, we weren't around there for what, how Riverside County handled it. But, um, I think part of the issues, it does seem to be quality control. You know, the flashing, probably leaking, the underlayment, underlayment company, we asked them. Um, they said that they, they don't have many claims and if we were to try to go after them, it'd be a process. We have to get a professional, have it tested, verify that it would be, it's, they're a faulty underlayment. But they say, I mean, they have a very low, it's a very low probability that, that it was the underlayment, it was probably the installation. So I also wanted to rec, um, mention the recommendations that, um, the last one is that to authorize city manager to execute all the necessary documents and again, including the notice of completion at the end of the project to authorize him to sign that.
Thank you for that clarification. And thank you again for the presentation and taking the time also to, to address our concerns and questions. Is there any, uh, further questions or comments, discussion?
Councilmember Lorimer.
So do we charge ourselves for the permit? Is, is that how that works? Yeah?
Thank you. You know, you could use that big check we got earlier and just pay for it there.
That's what I was gonna ask. Do we get any discount on the permit fees?
Yeah. All right. We'll, uh, we will solicit a motion. Can you get a second?
I would move for approval, option number four, um, on, with the approval of Right Way Roof Corporation contract. Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Yes.
Mayor Pla?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, if I might just a- add, I, I wanna thank our community development team and our public works team and our consultant teams on putting together these bid estimates for competitive transparent bid processes in the city of Eastville. Uh, we proactively reached out to a number of contractors, uh, roofers, um, to make sure that they are aware of, of, of these bids to, so that we can get multiple competitive processes. We worked really closely with them. Um, and, and, but we also worked in an expeditious manner because a leaky roof is no, uh, um, matter in which, uh, we want to have it continue to leak, especially during, during rain season. So, uh, I, I wanna thank, uh, also Battalion Chief, uh, Tovar and, and Division Chief Vike for bringing this issue, uh, this persistent issue back to our attention and, and making sure, uh, that our firefighters, um, at, at station twenty-seven, uh, uh, have, uh, dry offices and, and sleeping quarters, um, and living quarters while they're, uh, protecting us in our city. So, um, I want to, um, thank you for the collaboration between everybody though on this project, cause it was a, a big team effort. Um, and, uh, I'm not, I won't speak for, uh, B C Tovar, but I'm not sure any city's ever responded faster uh, uh, than the city of Eastville to, to his, uh, um, co- compe- uh, concern, so.
Now we wanna make sure that we take our partners and, and maybe as Vike would say, you know, we don't want any type two situations, right? Is that, did I get that right? There you go. Perfect. All right. All right. All right, we're at the tail end here. We'll, uh, we'll move to item number thirteen, city manager report and city staff reports. Brian, the floor is yours.
Um, the city of Eastville is pleased to announce the appointment of Amanda Wells as our new finance director, city treasurer. So if we can give her, uh, Amanda competed for this position on a national recruitment search that we went, uh, out, um, for the, the recruitment of this finance dr- uh, director position. And she competed, uh, and wa- was a successful candidate. Um, in July of twenty nineteen, she joined the city of, uh, of Eastville as our accounting manager and took over as acting finance director in Novem- and, and city treasurer in November of twenty nineteen. And she's been doing a great job in that acting role since then. Um, and so I wanna, um, she has a high degree of professionalism, a great expertise and experience as a finance director and, and, um, a great breadth and depth in, in, in accounting, auditing and, and, and finances. And so I, I'm glad to have her, uh, great skill set in, in our hands here in, uh, in Eastville, so. Um, and she happens to be an Eastville resident too, so, uh, uh, that's a great, that we have such talented, uh, interviews for the planning manager position will begin next week and recruitment for an accounting manager to replace Amanda's old position will be opening soon. So, uh, she will get to hire, uh, a teammate here soon. Uh, January is National Blood Donor Month. In, in collaboration with Livestream, the city hosted a blood drive, uh, yesterday at city hall on January twenty-first. Donors, uh, were each given a five dollar Starbucks gift card and we have a number of those in Eastville where you can purchase coffee. Um, the city has secured a hundred and ten thousand dollars in grant funding, uh, from AQMD to fund electric vehicle charging stations. The city is required to match that grant funds. Therefore, the total amount of funding available, uh, to new and existing businesses will be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we are actively working with all of our developers to make sure that we can bring charging stations to this EV charging desert known as the Inland Empire. So there's a gap on the fifteen here, uh, and we wanna fill that gap. So our residents, guests and businesses can all charge their electric vehicles here in Eastville. Uh, the first business success roundtable of the year will take place on January twenty-eighth. Um, the goal of each roundtable meeting is to facilitate open communication between Eastville's businesses and the city of Eastville. And, uh, Little Eastern Cafe celebrated their ribbon cutting on January sixteenth. Uh, they offer an Asian fusion menu and are located within the station. And that is also an Eastville resident that has invested in a, an ethnic, authentic ethnic restaurant in our community. And so, uh, we are very excited to welcome, uh, their business and their family, uh, to serve, uh, the residents of Eastville. So, uh, just wanted to, uh, share all that good news.
Thank you, Brian. Yep?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted, wanted to ask about the, um, the EV, uh, grant for the charging stations. Is that restricted to one particular brand like Tesla or will it be a variety of charging stations so that others can use it?
So, so the funds cannot be used for a particular brand, but the funds can be used for the infrastructure for a particular brand. Uh, um, so if a particular brand wants to use those to help put in infrastructure for their particular brand, they could. Uh, um, so it could be a Tesla charging station, uh, um, but it can't be used for the Tesla charging units.
So whoever wants to do a public private partnership will.
Correct.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I, I got that right, Gina, right? Okay.
You did. Excellent.
I, I'd ask for multiple clarifications on that, but yes.
Thank you, Mr. Drones, for the update. We'll now turn to item fourteen, city council communications and committee reports. We'll go with the League of California Cities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so the League of California Cities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so the League of California Cities, we had our division meeting, which took place on, uh, Monday the thirteenth. Had, um, Councilmember Rigby, Mayor Pro Tem Yao and our City Manager, uh, Brian Jones was there. And, um, it was a good turnout. It was a very large turnout, actually. And, um, the, the one thing about the Riverside Division, which encompasses all cities in Riverside County with the exception of one, which is across the freeway, um, we as a division, uh, with a league do better than almost any other, well, every other division in California in terms of, um, elected officials being active and engaged. So, it was, uh, a, a great turnout and that took place out in San Jacinto. So, that's the league for now.
Okay. You wanna take over SCAG as well?
Absolutely. Um, so for SCAG, we had, um, had a couple of meetings since our last meeting. The first, uh, I'm involved with the, um, host committee that's associated with the upcoming General Assembly. And, um, so as part of that, being part of that committee, um, they've put, because I've moved up the ranks over at SCAG as second Vice President, the responsibility for that person, that year is to raise funds. So every year, need to raise more funds than the previous year. So thankfully, I'm getting, I have, uh, a number of other elected officials that are participating in that. I believe the goal this year is three hundred and seventy-four thousand that we need to raise for the upcoming General Assembly. So that money doesn't have to come from taxpayers to pay for that. And so we're, we're in the process, process of doing that and we've accomplished, uh, raising forty thousand dollars to date, and so eleven percent of the way there, I think. On the way, onward and upward. Um, also, um, earlier this week, we had the Legislative Communications and Membership Committee meeting. And that's the, well, as it says, we deal with communication, uh, legislative issues, um, as well as our membership for SCAG. And, um, so there were a number of organizations that we, uh, continued to support and, um, yeah, one, we did not, uh, well, I voted against it, but I still think it passed and that had to do with Vehicle Miles Traveled, uh, a sponsorship associated with that. There are, uh, a couple of the issues that were discussed, um, coming down the line, uh, these are looking forward, some legislation having to do with, um, I, I forget the exact bill number, but this will come forward likely in November. And this, assuming it gets through the state legislature, did not last year, became a two-year bill. And that is to, um, allow, to put forward a sales, uh, to allow a decrease in the percentage necessary for a vote to take place, uh, for, for a tax to pass, I'm sorry. So down from the two-thirds vote, they wanna decrease that to fifty-five percent currently. That is only associated with school districts. They want that to apply to cities as well as other, uh, and special districts. Um, I believe that if you have, uh, something that needs to pass in terms of a bond, which does of course get added on to, um, your local property taxes, that you need to have a good reason and be able to explain that to the voters in order for that to pass. Um, so the committee ended up voting on whether or not to support this legislation going through, uh, the Assembly right now, then on to the Senate, eventually to the governor. If it gets through all those processes, then it will eventually end up on the ballot. Um, and so that was one of the issues we weighed in on. The other had to do with the issuance of another bond and, um, this is being put forward, I believe, out of the Assembly. And I, again, I forget the number and I apologize, I should have the document in front of me. But, um, it would be to do, to release another, they don't know yet, but they believe it'll be a four billion dollar bond to deal with climate change issues as we move forward. Um, climate change, yes, i- i- it is a concern, but my main concern, a- and the, the state's budget this year is two hundred and twenty-two billion dollars. Um, it, which is the biggest it's ever been. They're looking to come forward now and add another bond, uh, with this one specific piece of legislation that was offered by a, um, Assembly Member out of, uh, the Bay Area. California currently has eighty billion dollars in bonds that have been issued. There are another forty-two billion that have yet to be issued, but have already been approved. It's a hundred and twenty-two billion dollars that is out there. Uh, the, it, it's insane, the amount that we are putting our city, our state in debt. And, uh, I, I'm gonna get off my soapbox, I promise, but, uh, it, a hundred and twenty-two billion. It, it's amazing. I started doing the math on it, trying to figure out how long it would take to, uh, pay this off. If, if you, to, to put billions into perspective, I, I was doing the math on my calculator, on my phone and my phone was having a hard time putting it into perspective for me, but eventually I figured it out. If you paid a dollar a minute to pay this back, a dollar a minute, it would take one thousand something years to pay off that amount of money. Thankfully, we are paying more than that, uh, a- at the tune of six billion dollars a year. Just goes towards, um, the financing, towards interest. But anyway, I, I'm gonna stop there, but that was a meeting that I had the other day. I voted against that bill, but, um, the committee went to support it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lorimer. Well, that detailed report. Appreciate that. And you can go to your soapbox anytime, you're fine, yeah, don't no doubt about it. All right, W R Kong.
The Kong did not have a meeting this, this month. First week of February.
Riverside Transit Agency was mean, I'll, I'll, if you would like to come up, you can, wanna deliver the report for us?
Um, on January seventeenth, we had our annual Tinami at UCR, where we saw our centerpiece. Our chapter lost to Reno Valley, they won the centerpiece. And then also, the RT board meets tomorrow at two, at two o'clock at County Mission Center in Riverside. And then also the Route Four is on the agenda tomorrow. They're gonna talk about having free bus rides starting May twelfth through May thirty-first, if it's approved by the Board of R T A. Um, and then also, I'm actually doing something, I know you guys remember, I think she's remembered, Brandon Lane, you remember Brandon Lane? I am gonna do what Brandon Lane did, starting February first and see, I have to report to Joan, uh, R T A every day, give her the time, let her buzz all that, cause I shall prove to do that. And then that's gonna be starting February first. Then our next Tinami is on February thirteenth in Norco City Hall. And I am, and also just so you guys know, I was elected secretary for our chapter for Northwest Tinami. And I won't say who, put my name out there, he's in front of me. Thank you. That's basically it, so let's just see, and then also, I came up with an idea, but, um, R T A, Bureau of Business and Tinami. To promote Route Four, we need to promote Route Four from the shopping centers or something out here in Eastville. We need to work on that. That's an issue that we need to think, so that way we can get it going. Thank you.
No point in telling Keith, but thanks for throwing me under the bus there. Yeah, no problem. All right, fair enough, fair enough. Also, also to, to announce, uh, Ike is actually gonna be our Chair for the Tinami Chapter as well. And, and Jim Steiner, Mayor Corona, is going to be our Vice Chair, also along with our Secretary Keith White. So, that is it for R T A?
Oh, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I apologize. I, I, the great thing about these things, they have histories, uh, on the calculators. So I, I did the math, eighty billion dollars. I'm getting back on that soapbox. Eighty billion dollars, there are, uh, that, that's how much is, is owed. Whoa, where'd it go? Okay. So there are five hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred and sixty minutes in a year. So, if you go through and divide that out, the, what that ends up equalling, if you pay it out a dollar a minute, one hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-five years. That's how much, when we're talking about billions, right? So, anyway.
And I feel like if you didn't mention that, that's how much minutes of sleep you would have lost, thinking about it, thinking about it, had you not got that off your chest. So I'm glad that you got that off your chest. How you got it? Uh, Western Community Energy. There's no report. Thank you. Uh, Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Uh, we actually have a meeting tomorrow morning, a special meeting, closed session, so, I'll see if I'm able to update you guys next time.
R C T C.
That was earlier this month, uh, so, next time.
Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Agency.
We haven't met since our last city council meeting.
J C Parks, J C S D Parks Commission, that's not till February. And then Finance Committee, we met yesterday and were, was given a presentation by Michael Connor just in regards to, um, yeah, foreclosures and how to, how to collect on those registration fees, so, and we appreciate that, that, uh, that due diligent, uh, presentation you gave. I think we might be able to get something out of that. It was very good for those that, uh, were not there at the Finance Committee, so we appreciate that. Thank you. We'll now move to City Council Communications and I'll start, actually, I'll start to my right. Go. Oh, wait for your phone to go off.
Consistent, right?
You need to lean to the left. Well, I gave you the left. I'll start, I'll start with Clint over here. I'll start with Clint.
I, I can look back through the history of my calculator some more.
No.
Um, all right, so on, uh, Thursday, the sixteenth, Little Eastern Cafe, uh, the grand opening over there. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, actually, she, Jocelyn Yao, gave a great, uh, speech. I really enjoyed it, so, thank you. And the food was amazing. We had staff in attendance. It was a true party. And if you saw the, uh, the pictures of the event, of the spread they put out, different appetizers, oh, yeah, Keith was there. Yeah, that's right, that's right. He, he was in attendance and I, I think partook in the good food as well. Um, if, if you haven't tried it out, I, I'd really recommend making your way up there. Um, it is, uh, it is Asian fusion. Um, I know that it is, there, there are absolutely Chinese dishes there, including as well specifically Taiwanese dishes. But there was some Japanese thrown in too, so Asian fusion, I got clarification from the owner. Um, excellent, uh, try it out. And on, also that evening, I made it, I ran from there back to Riverside. Um, there was a Women in Transportation Scholarship, uh, presentation that SCAG was presenting and they asked me to attend. Uh, really well, um, well, packed audience, actually, over there. Uh, the president of SCAG at the last minute, um, and I, I do not begrudge him, uh, made his way over and presented the award in my place, but I didn't wanna miss the opportunity to be there to, to recognize them. And also had a great time, uh, well, with a long weekend, but of course, this was Martin Luther King Day. Um, great man and, you know, I, I was, I actually have been putting up these quotes, I was late on, uh, social media. I had such a hard time trying to find the right one that I, I eventually, it became information overload from him, I should say. But, um, so there, there, there is reason for the holiday, it's good reflect. And, um, we have a very di- diverse community in this city and, um, it's truly wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
As, as Councilmember Lorimer mentioned, we were at the Little Eastern Cafe grand opening. And, um, in addition to that, also shout out to Councilmember Tassari for putting together, and the Kiwanis Club, um, for putting together a great Lunar New Year celebration. The parking lot was completely full. I, and, and we had it at River Heights and they had it at River Heights Intermediate School, which is, you know, the parking lot is not small, but that was completely filled, so, um, kudos. And that was, um, I think two hours of entertainment and that, yeah, that was, it was an amazing event. And the food, yes, but I, I've never seen so much food at, at one event. It was, it was a lot of food, good food, of course, yeah. So, thank you, kudos, and we look forward to next year, yes, and I heard that you might be performing next year, so. Yeah, there we go.
Councilmember Rigby.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, I know that we are, uh, working on it, but just wanted to, to bring it back to council. But on, um, when we talked with the Van Lewens regarding their property and did the rezoning, he offered to, uh, the Right Away dedication for that, and I know that staff is working on that. But, um, hopefully, we can, uh, work with him to make sure that that's done and taken care of so that we can continue on with the second phase of the community park. I know that was the, the main thing that J C S D was waiting on was for that, so. Um, as was mentioned in public comment this evening, the parking regarding Seraphina, it has, outside of Seraphina on Caxton, um, it has been an item that has been before us numerous times. We've worked with, uh, the HOA, we've tried to, um, to work with them to come to a solution. And as, as the residents have mentioned, we have not yet come to that solution. So with my colleagues' support, I would like to ask if staff can look at other options, such as possibly doing, uh, no overnight parking there, um, uh, or parking by permit. Um, but just look at a couple of options and see if that can be brought back to us. If I could get my, my colleagues' consensus to have that brought back, uh, have staff bring something before us.
And also just to, just to echo that, I know Jaime, you know, I've, I've talked to him about it, who made public comment, right? He would be more willing also to get petitions throughout the neighborhood to make sure there's consistency with everyone there about having something like that, uh, no parking type situation. So, I, I think, I think we need to kind of elevate this a little more and see what we can get done there, cause it is a, it is a serious situation. There was actually a lot of people there that didn't make public comment, but they were there to hear it, a lot, probably at least about fifteen people, so it's an issue, so.
I, I think if we can, if we can have staff bring back some recommendations, um, and then prior to those recommendations or prior to that coming to council, if we just make sure that we share that specifically with those neighbors and, and, um, kind of hold them accountable also, that it's up to them to help us to get it out, um, get the message out, um, that they can help us to get the message out, to have people come participate in that so that we can make sure that we're in line with, with what the residents want. Last thing I want is for us to make a decision and then the residents come back and say, no, that's not what we're talking about. So, we wanna give them a, an opportunity to voice their concerns again and give their, their input. Um, the last thing that I, that I wanted to ask, and I don't know, this is more of a, a sheriff's question. Um, we talked about it briefly during our, um, budget workshop that we just had, but the accidents that we've had within the city. I was, um, on social media the other day and someone posted that there was an accident on Archibald. And then within a couple of hours, there was another accident on Hamner. Um, and it just seems like a common theme that we're seeing, just a lot more accidents. So I don't know if, if it would be appropriate for, um, the Sheriff's Department to, um, maybe start off with a Public Safety Commission, but give a, kind of an update, if it's, if it's just what we're seeing on social media or if it's an actual thing of that we're seeing an uptick in, uh, traffic accidents and then kind of what we can do, um, to combat those and, and where we can help as a city. Because I mean, I think it is something that, uh, we're seeing it and we're seeing it and we're, we're saying that we're seeing it, but I think it's something that we need to address. So if it's something that the Sheriff's Department needs, the city council's support or resources or whatever, I think it's something that we need to nip in the butt now before we get another fatality.
Yeah, our statistics show that traffic, uh, accidents are increasing. I think we're averaging about three a day right now. It was about two a day, probably six months ago, so.
So I don't know, I'd be curious just to have some sort of brief report, even before the Public Safety Commission, see what their response is and then have something before us as a council, just to, to see where we're, where we've been, where we're at now and kind of, um, not detailed plans, but if there's anything that we can do to help. Um, so maybe on a future agenda, if, if the Sheriff's Department wouldn't mind doing something like that.
We can put something together for you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tassari?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, uh, to, in regard to what you were just speaking on, unfortunately, the one way to mitigate. unfortunately, the one way to mitigate and reduce traffic collisions is increase citations. So they usually go hand in hand. Unfortunately. Um, yeah, I just wanted, I'm sorry.
Sorry, if I can, eh, maybe it's, it's part of that too, is helping people just realize the whole public education. Maybe we use that presentation just as a public education thing also and, um, but that's, that may be what it takes. It may be what it takes and I, I know our motors would love to hear that and residents would hate to hear that, but sometimes it is what it is, yeah.
In my opinion, that the opening from, the connection from Ontario, you, we've increased a lot of traffic in the city. And with Ontario Ranch, all the new homes and the, and the Sumner up through Haven, that areas, you, you got a lot of people bypassing the fifteen by cutting through there. Yeah, and that's so. And that, that increased traffic means increased traffic collisions.
Yeah, it's an important stat to include in the presentation, because a lot of people just don't realize that the volume's gone up so, so high. And I just wanna thank Mayor, Mayor Protem, city manager, for coming out to, uh, join us at the Lunar Celebration. I think we had at least four hundred people there, so it was a great turnout. There was, the only reason I know is we only had three hundred and fifty chairs and there was a lot of people standing, so. And the food was great. Thank you, Mr. Bootsma, Mayor, for helping us, uh, put that together. And June Lee, she's not here, but there was a lot of people involved. Kiwanis Club did a great job. Um, I'll try to remember. Oh, I was gonna try and open up my phone. Afraid to. Oh, finally stopped. Every time I would try to look at my screen, I would get a scream. The deal was, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. If, if you, if you come up with an idea, though, if you have any other one, I'll just come back. Uh, yeah, over the weekend, had a lot of different events to attend. The one that I, I do wanna bring up is the, the CNUSD, the Free Dental Clinic, that's an annual clinic that they do. And it is absolutely their, they, they go around about, they do about the fifteen of these throughout the year and they go throughout the United States, but this one is their best performing clinic that is put on by Cor Norco School District. And they, they spend about seventy-five thousand dollars in dental work through that day. And it's a pretty impressive event. Uh, it was, it was nice, all the mayors, uh, of, of Corona, uh, Rupa Valley, uh, Eastville and Norco all represented were there. And, and it was just a, a great event. And it's, it's pretty awesome to see some of the, the expensive dental work that takes place. Goes anywhere from cavity fillings to root canals to, you name it. I mean, it's, it's pretty extensive, nor just simple cleanings, um, but it was an awesome event. Uh, tomorrow, please join us out for East Brew Cafe grand opening, and it's at four P M. Though, though my phone says three forty-five, but it's four, correct? Okay, four o'clock. Also, January twenty-eighth, twelve P M, our Business Success Roundtable. So please, small businesses, large businesses, medium-sized business, small, medium, what, home business, come on out and please attend. Uh, one other point I, I wanted to bring up is, uh, a few months ago, we voted on, I don't remember the, the quantity of it, but it was about six to eight radar-type, uh, signs, traffic signs out at the, the radar where they calculated the data of speeding. And we put these in through various neighborhoods and it was a rotational thing. One only comes to mind, and actually, two come to mind that where they thought it was permanent, we took it down and there's kind of this rotational system. I, I'd like us to look at maybe some of our, somehow we can substantiate, maybe some of our, our critical areas, collector's streets maybe in particular, of where maybe we can find permanent spots for some of these. Um, and still have a rotational system, but have some that, we know there might be some key issues in our city, uh, recurring issues so that when we don't take them, other issues come back. Cause it seemed to be, it seemed at the work when they were there. And so maybe if we can evaluate maybe some permanent homes for some, and, and they're relatively inexpensive as well to have these. So I'd like to see maybe we can address that at council, we need to look at, we need some permanent destinations for some of these places, uh, some of those signs and see if there's an opportunity to maybe even get more, cause they're, they're extremely valuable. And they're solving a lot of the internal issues that, i- i- inside the, and I say internal, uh, issues that are happening within the residences of, of the streets. So, um, I know we gotta be careful in how we define that, so you don't wanna open up a can of worms, and I can understand that. But I think that there's, we, we have something good going here with these and so, and it's working. So just maybe something we can bring up to find some destination spots for those. That is it. Do you remember what you had, June, or? You good? All right. With that being said, our, our meeting is now adjourned. And our next meeting will be February twelfth at six thirty P M. We'll see ya.